All right, why don't we go ahead and get started? If everyone could take your seats, please. Welcome to the March 17th Joint Work Session of the Falls Church City Council and Falls Church Planning Commission. Thank you all for coming out on a snowy night. It seems like we've had an awful lot of these snowy Monday meetings, but hopefully this is the end of it. But we appreciate you all coming out tonight. This is a work session. As such, members of the public will not be able to address Council and the Planning Commission. It'll really be for you to listen and observe. This is the first of many meetings on the West and Broad Street developments, so I don't feel that this is the last opportunity. There'll be many more times for you all to see it. We're here to have you take your input. We know we've got emails from folks earlier, and we're interested in your feedback, but tonight will not be a night for you all to speak, so just keep that in mind as you listen. Mr. Shields, why don't we go ahead with the first item, if you could?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of Council, members of the Planning Commission. Tonight, what we would like to do is allow the developer to present the project to the Council and the Planning Commission as a whole and to the public. The requested actions are a rezoning of the property, a granting of a special exception for the property, a comprehensive plan amendment, and a special use permit for a drive-through as part of the site. And up to this point, we have had meetings with -- multiple meetings with staff. We've met the developer, has presented to the Economic Development Committee of the City Council, and the developer's also met with some neighborhood groups. And we have provided comments back to the developer, some initial high-level comments, but at this point, the goal is just to get the same information that staff has and the EDC has out to the broader community, provide comment tonight, and then talk about next steps. And so if we could start with the developer's presentation, then we'll have a staff comments and comments on the EDC review of the project as well.
The system is not working, so we've handed -- we brought some handouts, so the planning commissioners have them, and Council has them, and what's left of it, and what is left, we'll try to get out into the council and to the citizens. So I apologize for that.
And we're going to do a computer swap-out and hopefully fix that, but in order to keep the meeting on time, we'll get started with the PowerPoint.
So again, I apologize.
This has been in the works for about two years. It's a four-acre area, and the reason that we're here tonight is to really try to kick this off. There's been an awful lot of discussion with the staff, changes to the development have been made. We've talked to the EDC, as the city manager has said. So there's been an evolution of the project, and it's really time, we think, to get this out into the public sector and start talking about it before we start making changes which the public wouldn't even know about. So our hope is to really kick this off and get it to what's called a first reading, which is really just the formal, legal, first public hearing, that it's open to the public after this meeting, and then it's referred to boards and commissions. We understand there's even some discussion about maybe having several boards and commissions meeting at one time, and we'd certainly like to do that. We have time constraints in the sense that these properties are all under contract. Our requirements are to get zoning entitlements and to get through the later site plan process so we can close on these properties by the end of the year. If we can't get through the process expeditiously, then the assemblage could be lost, and essentially the uses that you see there today will probably remain indefinitely. So that's why we're under -- that's why we're here, that's why we'd like to move as smartly as we can. And having said all that, there's a genuine excitement about being here, too, because it is time to show you, and we hope we can get this going, so you can see the pictures. Peter, if you want to jump in?
My name is Peter Batten. As Dave said, I'm one of the principals with Spectrum Development. We're the master developer for the entire project. And should I give you a minute? Keep talking. Okay. Well, I'll start out by giving everybody some key facts about this project. And I'm going to -- I understand that we are pressed for time because Planning Commission has another meeting here soon, so I'm going to run through this as fast as I can. This project is at a cost of slightly over $100 million. The assemblage of property began actually in the summer of 2011, and we have been collaborating with city staff and city officials since, really, it got more intense in the early 2013 timeframe. We have made many revisions to this plan. We've actually had three -- okay, we have success. So if you can go to page three. If you could go to page three, Karen.
Some of the lights down a little bit, so.
Yeah. Be great. There we go. Okay, this is where we are. You can go back. So we've -- we have -- there's been a lot of good suggestions that have come from staff and other folks in the city, and has come out of our meetings with neighborhoods in the area. And we've made several revisions, as I said, to the plan. We've made probably three substantial design changes that required a lot of new drafting. And this has been going on for the course of a good part of last year and as we've gotten into this year. This project has -- 30% of it is commercial, and that is more than the other mixed-use projects that you see in the city. The net fiscal impact of this project to the city from the initial estimates from the economic development folks is between $1.4 million and $1.8 million per year. This project is planning to contribute $2 million to the school's capital fund, which is based on $7,500 per market rate apartment. We are planning to contribute $100,000 to the W&amp;O-D Trail Park area at West Street, which is across the street from the project. This project is also going to have 6% of the units as affordable dwelling units, and we're planning to underground the utilities on the site. The marketing plan for the apartments and the amenities are designed for singles and young professionals and what we call empty nesters. The marketing plan calls for small units, which are really well-suited for the target market and is what their expectations are for apartments today. There are no three bedrooms in this project. In this project, the apartment units on average are about a third smaller than what you see at Pearson Square. Just to give you some insight as to the density of this project compared to other projects, our project Broad and West is 2.7 FAR. The other mixed-use projects that have recently been approved are 3.3 FAR. Our project at Broad and West has about 77 apartment units per acre. The other mixed-use projects recently approved have 100 to 110 apartments per acre. I'm bringing this up because we have made a conscious effort to minimize or bring down the density of this project compared to what you would see in a mixed-use project on a per-acre basis. And we've gotten the -- we think we've gotten the density down to a lower point, and we are right at the minimum level to reach the margins that the project needs to reach financially in order for it to be sustainable. The last point just brings up, we think, in our discussions with the neighbors and with city staff, that this project provides a very good opportunity to address some longstanding traffic problems that we all know about. This is just an aerial view of the existing properties. What you see in yellow is the entire group of properties that make up the project, and that represents about four acres of property. On this property is the Shreve Plumbing and Supply warehouses and retail building, and there's an old shopping center, strip center, and the Snoko gas station, and a small retail building on West Street. And along West Broad Street, some older retail buildings. This is a picture of the main corner of the project. You're seeing the first-floor retail with apartments above. This is the intersection of Northwest Street and West Broad Street. We believe that this project is consistent with the comp plan for Area 3, which talks a lot about consolidating parcels into larger parcels of land to be able to accomplish more dense mixed-use projects. And this project, which the architect will get into a little bit, is going to be a project that has upscale materials and architectural designs, and we think that this project will represent very well the city's continuation of and progress and commitment to excellence in design and growth. This is a view of the -- actually, the inside of the project. And this project started out first as a retail project, and we were working in the early stages with staff, and staff was talking about trying to assemble more property and do something more dense, more substantial. And so we worked on assembling other properties and created the project that you're seeing today. And like I said, this project started out as a retail shopping center first, and with the assemblage, successful assemblage of other properties, we have brought in the density, which is mainly a hotel and the apartments. This area you're looking at is the surface parking area for the retail, and the lighted areas are actually representing light that's coming through the project because the garage area or surface parking area is open to the sky, parts of it. And we think that this design is unique. I don't think you see anything like this in the city of Falls Church today, and it creates a very walkable, open-air environment and a very pleasant shopping experience. Go to the next one. This is just another view of the interior part of the project focusing on the retail that is along Northwest Street. This project will have a multitude of categories, commercial categories: restaurants, specialty shops, specialty grocers, pharmacy, convenience shopping, apparel shops, and some financial services will be a good example of the kind of retail that will be here. Again, you're looking at an opening of this area that's letting in light. We're trying to design something that has very attractive streetscape on the inside with the ability to enter the retail from the parking lot. There will be some customers that will be walking or prefer entering the retail spaces at the primary entrance on the streets, but there'll be some customers that will park and want to get out and go right to the retail store that they're coming there for. And Dick, I'm going to let Dick talk a little bit about the hotel.
As Dave said, I'm one of the principals in Spectrum, Dick Bussell. The hotel is going to be located at the, as you can see, at the east end of the project on West Broad. This hotel will be a 150-unit extended stay product, which is a Hilton brand. It's called Home Two Suites by Hilton. It'll be about 90,000 square feet and five floors above the retail. An extended stay market, some of you may be familiar with it. It basically is those in that segment are like the Marriott Resident Inn, Homewood Suites by Hilton, the Staybridge Suites in McLean by Holiday Inn. That's the product market that this particular segment's in. It was launched by -- it's a brand-new brand for Hilton, fairly brand-new. It was launched in 2009, and I think the closest Homewood Home Two Suites facility now is in Montgomery County up toward BWI. The franchising developer of this hotel will be Wide Water Group. They're out of Syracuse, New York. They've got over 30 years' experience in real estate development construction. In the last -- less than the last 10 years, they've done 25 hotel products with over 2,800 rooms. They were named Hilton Home Two Developer of the Year in 2011. In the next few weeks, we are going to choose and enter into an agreement with a multifamily developer to be our partner in the development of this project. They will join us with the development of the infrastructure, the retail, and the apartment. We are going to deliver to the hotel developer all the infrastructure for their parking, all the basic infrastructure, and a podium, which is means we'll build this to here. They'll get a podium to put their hotel on. We've entered into a letter of intent with them, and both of our attorneys now are in drafting of firm contracts. The only contingency of their coming forward is for us to receive entitlement. Once it's entitled, we'll have a firm contract with them to acquire the hotel and construct it, and we'll be required to deliver the podium to them. In order to get the hotel, the hotel market is a very fickle market, and Falls Church is considered really a B-market for hotels at this point in time. We did an exhaustive two-year search for a hotel developer that wanted to come into this market. We, in fact, had to in order to -- and it's a substantial commercial component of this project. In order to get the hotel, we were required to enter into a contract that basically they are getting their podium and parking at basically a cost, and they are not contributing anything to the land cost. But we think it's -- they're an important part of the project. They deliver something that the city probably needs and wants, and as a result, we did agree to that agreement. We should be under contract before we go to first reading with them. Contract will be unconditional. They're putting up a substantial deposit, and once this project is entitled and approved, that agreement will go forward.
Thanks, Dick. This is a view of the project from the intersection of Grove Avenue and Northwest Street. You see the first-floor retail, apartments above, and that's the Northwest Street access into the parking areas. The apartment building is planned for 302 small apartment units. 70% of these units will be studios and one-bedrooms. 30% of these units will be two-bedrooms. We're planning a building that will be lead silver. The amenities for this project are designed, again, for the target market. There'll be workout areas, pub-style lounge areas for singles and other types of activities for the residents, an adult pool, swimming pool, a business center, and probably a small theater for the residents. Metro and public transit will be featured in this project. We're in discussions right now about a shuttle service from the project to and from the project to the metro. This is a view of the project from the W&amp;O-D Trail. W&amp;O-D Trail, as you know, is here very close to the project. We think it virtually is a meeting of the project in this part of the city and the W&amp;O-D Trail. We think that the project will be an attractive place for trailgoers, an attractive stop for trailgoers. We're planning to put in crosswalks so that it's safe and inviting for people to go to and from the project and the W&amp;O-D Trail. We're also on the far east side. As we approach Park Avenue, we're planning to put in an urban plaza that will be, we think, a very nice gathering place for visitors, trailgoers, and the residents themselves. Then I'm going to ask Karen White with Walter Phillips to talk about the site plan and give you some technical details on the site plan.
Okay. I'm just going to walk you around the site and kind of tell you some stuff about it here. If we start over at the Park Avenue corner here, you'll see we have two single-family homes that we're proposing as a transition to the site. The multifamily building itself is set back 115 feet from the curb on Park Avenue and more than 150 feet from the existing residence on Park Avenue. We have a residential-type streetscape here along in front of these homes. We have a five-foot landscape strip and a six-foot clear sidewalk, which leads us to the urban plaza that Peter mentioned, where we'll have benches and bike racks where you could come off the trail, rest, or maybe park your bike and then use the center, or maybe meet up with someone before going to dinner somewhere at the center. And then along West Street and Broad Street, we have a continuous streetscape and building setback. The building's set back a minimum of 20 feet from the curb, and in this area here on West Street, the building's set back over more than 250 feet from any existing residential homes. The trail separates any homes and the proposed development. So again, we have a minimum 20-foot setback along here with a five-foot landscape strip, or let's say, tree planters around here, so you have about a 14-foot clear sidewalk along here. And then in some of these 14-foot sidewalk areas, we do have some seating, areas for seating. So behind the tree planters here to kind of shield the diners from the traffic along here. As we walk around, we have one of our entrances here on West Street, in and out, right in, right out. And we come around the corner here. Again, some more dining behind the landscape strips here. We have an existing bus stop, which will remain right here by this entrance here, which is right in, right out, and left in. And as we come to this corner, we are proposing a new traffic signal and a new crosswalk across Broad Street. One last thing to discuss. On the side here, we have a -- there's a 20-foot setback required between our building and the existing residential property owned by the church. We are maintaining that 20-foot setback. We're a little limited on landscaping in that area because of the existing storm sewer that runs down the property here. We're actually tying all of our building and development storms into this existing system here. For stormwater, we're meeting the new requirements that come into effect this July. We're doing that using some green roofs, some bioretention planters, and some underground detention on the site. And then Matt, if you want to go a little more in the streetscape?
Just real quick, I think Karen covered it well, but, you know, it doesn't always look quite as nice in plan, but really, our intention is to create a more dense urban streetscape. So really, what we're trying to bring to the city is a really lively streetscape. So both West and Broad, we think, are sorely under-retailed from an, you know, exciting retail standpoint, so we're really trying to densify and allow some outdoor living rooms to go along both West and Broad. There'll be slightly different characters, obviously, along the path and then along Broad Street, but on the Broad Street side, we'd love to just mix together what'll be gated off cafe areas for the restaurants, keep a lot of the -- and we haven't worked this out with staff yet, but keep a lot of the throughput, a lot of the foot traffic right up against the retail environment, keep the cafes out, keep the living rooms out, and really make this an exciting outdoor environment. So this was really our primary concern, was making sure that the streetscape and the retail facades that went down both West and Broad were just really exciting. And so I think this character is very much a Broad Street character, and then I think on the west side, there'll be slightly smaller Quick Bites, a lot of ice cream shops, bike shops, that kind of thing, and so it'll be probably more living rooms and less cafes. So next slide. And then just real quick, Karen covered it as well. Our theory really is to get the retail folks in off the street and have what's essentially on-surface parking. It's under a lot of the building, but it's on-surface parking, be well-lit, and we'll treat it like, you know, a high-end onsite parking environment, and they'll have three separate entries to get into that lot, so it'll be very porous. You'll have a lot of ways in and out of that small retail parking garage. And then the folks that are actually living above our big retail building have two different ramps down into that lower garage, which are separated both on the first east side of the West -- I'm sorry, of the Broad Street entry, as well as a rear ramp between the single-family homes and our apartment buildings. So those ramps will be able to serve both the hotel and the residences separately from the retail, so we can keep all that traffic moving, keep them separated, keep everybody happy. So as you can see, we got a large lower level and then just a little bit of extra level parking below that. Next slide.
My name is Will Johnson with the Firm of Wells and Associates. We did the traffic study that got submitted with the application, so coming out of that traffic study, I just wanted to briefly highlight some of the key transportation elements and improvements that we're proposing in conjunction with this development here. And one of the things I wanted to point out is we're really making an effort to improve access management in this corner. As you may be aware, the existing development has a number of curb cuts that are really just scattered along all street fringes today, the gas station, the retail front, some of the commercial buildings. We're consolidating those access points, and we're focusing them on four points of access: two along Broad Street, and then two, again, along West Street. And actually, the ones closest to the West and Broad intersection, we're proposing to be partial movement, so there will be left turns restricted going out of the site. So again, we're really trying to improve safety and access, and really trying to make sure that the site is easily circulated internally. We have a very defined grid of driveways that permeate through the property. All loading is going to be internal to the site, so there's going to be no loading on the public streets, no backing up of trucks or anything like that. So again, we're, you know, we're really trying to respect, you know, the safety and the mobility of the surrounding street network. One of the key areas of concern that, you know, we are certainly aware of and the city is aware of is the intersection of Park and West Street. We know that this has been a concern for a while, a long time, and We know that this has been a concern for a while, a long time, and we know there have been a number of ideas that have been proposed. What we're proposing here is really to tighten the intersection. As you're aware, West Street swings around to the north, and Park Avenue is forced to stop. What we're proposing to do is to tighten the intersection and really work to make it a traditional four-legged intersection, working to smooth some of the angles out. We are constrained by the park land to the north and west, but we're really trying to make this safe, where we're also proposing always stop at the intersection, and what that does is several things. It calms traffic, as well as provides for safer pedestrian crossing, particularly at this crosswalk we're posing up here, which would connect our site to the W and O D Trail. And by the way, the W and O D Trail, as you see at the top of the screen, that's the realigned W and O D Trail right now, which just sort of swings across right immediately north of our intersection. And that's what the park authority is proposing to do. And the last thing I wanted to touch on, too, is we are proposing a traffic signal down on Broad Street. We really see this as the primary means of egress for the site, try to draw the traffic, you know, really, as much as we can away from the rear of the property. You know, we want to get people out on Broad Street and be able to get them to access points east and west. And we also think the traffic signal will serve to provide additional pedestrian crossing over Broad Street. And I wanted to touch on Grove Avenue. The applicant has met with a number of neighbor groups, and we understand that Grove Avenue is really one of the key concerns. And really, we understand this to be an existing concern related to cut-through traffic, speeding. So in an effort to be responsive and proactive, and really, the applicant, we're neighbors here, so we have an interest in making sure we have a safe and well-planned transportation network. So again, in order to be responsive, Wells and Associates actually has done a traffic assessment of Grove Avenue. And right now, that study is in city staff, they're reviewing it, and we're going to be, you know, progressing with as we move forward this application. So we consider ourselves to be in the early stages of this. This graphic here is really a snapshot of one of our figures in that study, which shows some existing traffic signage and some operational conditions, most notably the two speed humps on Grove Avenue, as well as the always stop at Burke Street. So we did collect data, that's part of our assessment. We collected some counts, we collected some speeds on a day that wasn't snowing like today. And we put our findings in that report. We do see evidence of some traffic and some speeding out there, some things that we think we can work to address as we move forward with this. We do have some ideas, some thoughts, and we look forward to working with city staff and the community at large to try to develop and refine these ideas and work on some solutions out on Grove Avenue.
I'll just take that. I just want to make a comment about our meetings with the folks and neighbors on Park Avenue. Two concerns came out of those meetings that, or in a smaller third one. The first concern was that there is an existing problem with parking on Park Avenue in front of the residences, and it seems to happen a lot when the church has mass services or large meetings. And the residents have asked us if we would support their pursuit of residential zone permit parking, which we would be supportive of that if the city finds that that could be an attractive solution for that problem. The other thing that the neighbors were very interested in learning about was the ideas we had for the intersection of Park Avenue and Northwest. They, as everybody knows, see a lot of fast-moving cars, and it's difficult to see traffic coming when you're trying to get out of Park Avenue, so there was a lot of discussion about that. And we shared with them the ideas that have come out of the study in working with Wells Associates and city staff also. The other thing was, there was a lot of talk about water runoff, stormwater management, and we explained that we would be using a stormwater management system with a lot of new technology that we think will help any baggage or backup of stormwater flow, and also currently the overflow or flooding that occurs sometimes to the east of the site. We can go to the next slide. And then Matt, I'm going to have you come back up and just make some comments about the architecture inside.
Just real quick, obviously, as Dick was saying earlier, we really designed this as a retail building, so a large retail building, and we'll put the residential above that. So essentially, we're going to stay below our special exception of 85 feet all the way around the project. The, really, the reason we need, we're asking for that special exception is because of the size of that retail building, we want to build a very large podium in order to really appeal to as many retailers as possible. So when Dick says we're looking at commercial entities, we're really looking at the full range of retailers, restaurateurs, professional services, a lot of other exciting stuff. So anything that, you know, and our main thing is a merchandising strategy, they all got to speak to each other. They all have to speak to the neighborhood, they all have to speak to the neighbors upstairs. And if they don't sing together, then we're not getting anybody. So we'll, you know, we'll get them all together, and we'll get it done really, really well. So above that building is really five stories of residential, and then a five-story hotel stretching along Broad and West. But then, as it goes along to Park, we lose a story on that multifamily piece, and it becomes a four-story over the retail bar with the two single-family homes that are actually sitting on Park. So there's an opportunity for two little jewel box, single-family homes that sit over on this side of the property. So this is actually just a four-over-one on this side, whereas it's five-over-one on the other facades. In terms of materials, we're really stuck with a nice, traditional palette, sort of a warm, natural tones, but we use some fairly, you know, contemporary detailing, so just a framing, some simple contemporary windows, but we're sticking with a natural palette. Material-wise, our focus from a green building standpoint is on efficiencies, energy and water predominantly, and durability. So really, we're looking at cement fiber panel siding and a lot of masonry, and then some phenolics, we think, for, you know, really some creative touches, some wood tones in the facade itself. A lot of, you know, metal detailing in the Juliet balconies and in the internal balconies, a lot of fun stuff. So really, well-insulated building. We've got a little bit of green roof, which is always fun. The rest of the roof will be a high albedo reflective roof. We'll make sure that this is really sort of the cutting edge for good, contemporary, green building.
Just to make sure, since Matt didn't mention it, what you were looking at on the other slide was Park Avenue. And we would be constructing with a residential home builder two new homes that would actually be on Park Avenue. This slide is just talking again about the net fiscal impact to the city in comparison to the existing improvements. As we said earlier, we're estimating 1.4 million to 1.8 million per year in net fiscal impact for the city from this project. And currently, the properties are producing net income to the city, we understand, of about $138,000 per year. This graph just shows the difference over the course of a 15-year period of the revenue from the current uses compared to the project itself. The other thing I will say is that if the project is not able to go forward for whatever reason, the landowner does have, the Shreve family who owns about half of this block has a backup plan, and their plan is to do some light refurbishment of the existing buildings, maintain the existing parking that's there. And they are planning to re-lease, do new leases with the existing tenants, with most of the existing tenants, the major existing tenants. And then I'll ask Dave to make a comment about the historic structure that is there.
The staff report makes a point of we didn't apply for demolition permit from the Historic Review Board. That's because there already was a demolition permit submitted some time ago to Mrs. Henderson. It was approved. So there exists a demolition permit for the structure at 920 West Broad Street. And those of you who lived here at the time may recall, she promptly sold the property to a developer who then essentially demolished a great deal of the structure and sort of surrounded it by a new structure. So some of the old structure is still there, but the original porch is gone, there's a new foundation there. Two sides of the building were razed and removed, and the original roof was removed. So our view of this is, is that there does exist, and it's in the staff file, a demo permit. This is essentially what happened with Northgate. Northgate, where the old funeral home was, there was a demo permit issued to Steve Waddell 10 years or more before the Northgate development was approved. And then when the Northgate development was approved, the building came down without having to return a second time to the Historical and Architecture Review Board. So we're well aware of the significance of the fact that there was a structure there, that there's some sense of history. And so the thought was that the houses that are on Park Avenue was the opportunity to celebrate that, either perhaps by using some of the same materials that can be salvaged or taking some direction in terms of the types of structures that you want there. But that's why we haven't applied for another permit from the H A R B. We've raised the subject with the zoning administrator, and we'll pursue that. So and with that...
Turn it back to Peter.
I was just going to say, in conclusion, that we have done a lot of work with staff, and I think a lot of good suggestions have come out of that work with staff, and I think that the project is a better project and serves the community better, in our opinion, because of the work and the ability to incorporate a lot of those suggestions. We're really, really excited to get started with the public part of the process, and we feel like the project has come a long ways and that it's really ready for the public's comments and suggestions. So with that being said, we'd like to turn it over to Q and A.
And Mayor Carter, we do have, I think, probably a very brief set of staff comments that we would like to share at some point during the program. If you want to jump into Q and A now, that's fine, but we do have some staff comments.
No, what I might suggest is you all go ahead and have a seat, if you can, wherever you can be comfortable, and have our staff report. Maybe turn the lights back off, if that's okay, and then go around the table with comments. And some of those comments may be questions to you all, they may just be general comments. Tonight is the first of many meetings, public meetings, and we do have a full agenda, both the City Council and the Planning Commission, so it won't be an exhaustive review. You'll really just get kind of first cut at thoughts and comments and questions, but there'll be many more, I think, going forward. So with that, why don't we go ahead, Mr. Shields, and have the staff report you just alluded to.
Mr. Fuller.
Thank you. I just want to highlight, real quick, the land use and zoning actions that are required with this, just to put it in context, and then I'll let you go to your discussion roundtable. First of all, there's a comprehensive plan amendment, and that's to the actual map. Right now, it's designated business for the existing business properties and low-densing residential for the residential properties on Park Avenue, and the request is to change it to a mixed-use, leaving the reconstituted residential potentially residential in terms of the comp plan designation. Also required would be a rezoning, and the current zoning is B3, B1 commercial, and then R1B, which is the residential on Park Avenue again. And they would eliminate all the zoning and go to B1, and that would enable them to qualify for a special exception application, having all B1 uses, and they could plan out the whole site. Then that would lead to the special exception, which is for two, really, residential development and a mixed-use project, and secondly, a height bonus. In this case, they're requesting 30 feet above the B1 zoning by right of 55 feet. There's also a special use permit for a drive-through. This is now with the zoning code changes, Council action instead of VZA. And then in addition, we alluded to the H A R B permit that would be required for the historic structure that we will be discussing further. So at this point, I just wanted to put it in context, what's involved, and I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fuller. Before we get started with comments from the general, from Council and the Planning Commission in general, why don't we go ahead and hear from the Economic Development Committee Chair, Mr. Baruch, about their consideration?
Thanks, Mayor Carter. So the Economic Development Committee of the Council, along with members of the Planning Commission and Economic Development Authority, met on February 18th, was the last meeting that we had on this project. I'll outline as follows what the EDC liked, further information that was needed, and issues that were identified, and some of the next steps that were identified as well. So to summarize, what the EDC liked was the hotel use, which was critical to meeting the primary criteria for the SC. There was also a request to get a better sense of the particular brand and what was entailed. Two was the volume of commercial use, the more, the better. Also, the higher the percentage of the overall square footage that was dedicated to commercial, the better. Some more work was identified as being needed in this area. Lot consolidation was something that the EDC found significant to this project. Also, the pocket park, which we didn't really discuss this evening, their overall fiscal impact seemed to be positive. Information that was requested was average unit size by square foot for each type of unit, i.e. studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and any of the models with dens. Also, a revised FAR calculation with and without the two single-family homes to get a better sense of comparison to already-approved projects, whether they're built or not. And then issues that were identified, clear understanding that there would be changes that would be needed to the project and also the VCs as the development application goes forward, including input from boards and commissions. Schools, there was a remaining concern about the project will impact school operating and capital budgets. Traffic was something that was discussed at some length, and needing to better understand how the traffic mitigation impact and what will be done on West Grove and Park corners and the project generally. Massing, there was discussion of a need for careful illustration of the project massing in relationship to adjacent properties in the neighborhood and shadow studies that were not provided. And there was some discussion that the city may also engage in independent massing study as well, which we've done in past projects. The city would also be looking to reduce or step back the building massing, particularly on West Street. There was also discussion that the applicant should be prepared for the city to request to replace the two single-family homes with such things as a neighborhood park or green space, but that would be based on further community discussions. The city would also be seeking developer contributions to improve West End Park possibly, or W and O D, and the city would be working with the applicant and the Northern Virginia Regional Park Authority. And the project could contain, there was discussion about whether the project could contain an element of an independent senior housing. And then retail location, there was discussion about ways of preserving local retailers that are currently at the site and making it an attractive environment for those businesses as well. And finally, the city would seek developer commitment to lock in anchor commercial usage, particularly the hotel.
Those are the comments we had. Thank you very much. Why don't we go now around the room, and it's limited to just one time, we're not going to be able to circle back around, given the fullness of the agenda today. Maybe I can turn it over to you, Ms. Rogers, and you can organize Planning Commission thoughts, how you want it.
Council members, and I hope it also made it to the Planning Commission, the notes that I read from, you all should have a copy. Why don't we get the rest of them passed around?
We'll go through the planning section. You can have one question and one comment.
Oh, one question? Dang, I got to narrow them down.
Because we'll have a number.
Yeah. First of all, my one comment is it's great to see the lot consolidation. I think that's something that's been missing from a lot of our special exceptions that have gone through, so I like to see that. Of my questions, I will ask, does anyone know if extended stay hotel would qualify someone to put a kid in the schools if you were staying there extended time? No, can't? No? We should find out. That's my one question.
I guess it depends on how extended stay was.
Just have one cut, I think the idea was that each person could have one, say, we're not going to double back, but you can make more than one cut if you have one.
The only other question, really, I did have a question about with the lot consolidation. I notice there's one lot on Broad, before we get to the church, that's not part of this, presumably, there's a reason. So, I'm more curious if that was ever possible to include in the project, since that will now be fairly orphaned and have limited redevelopment potential on the road.
We have explored that. Very, very difficult to, it seems, to work something out with that particular property owner. The other thing is, is that it would add more density, and we felt that, in our discussions with the city, that we wanted to manage how much density we were building here, especially on the apartments. So, there wasn't a lot of incentive for us to try to capture that property, although it would be nice to finish the block out, that's one advantage, for sure, but those are the reasons.
Okay, I just have a few questions. I think one, just a few questions. One thing I wanted to mention, because it was mentioned in Mr. Baruch's notes from the EDC, is that I am not a big fan of the single-family homes on Park. I think it would be much better to have that as a green space, and that kind of segues to the parking issue, because I'm thinking if those two single-family homes weren't there, perhaps parking could be extended further underground, because I know that underground parking kind of comes up right behind those houses. And I think that a park with large trees, you know, could shield and give a more neighborhood feel, just as well as the two houses could, and you could pick up some more parking. One thing, just to be clear, I don't think I saw an actual parking study in the material we have, is that correct?
That's correct, it has been submitted.
Okay, so, then we are going to get a more, a formal parking study at some point? Because twenty percent is probably the largest reduction we've ever seen requested, and I think we'd need to see a lot of information to feel comfortable with that. And like I said, I think we should be looking for ways to increase the parking just a little bit. And I think the other thing that makes it difficult is, we don't have a split on that studio first bedroom, and I think that the amount of parking needed for a studio versus a first bedroom could be quite different, because you may be, you're a single person versus perhaps a couple. And so, and I think...
Usually, there are different ranges.
Yeah, there is, and we're not seeing that in there. And so, we're just getting a 1.5 for both, so I think that makes a big difference, and it may be that you don't have the floor plate organized enough to have that breakout. So, I mean, I think my issues are the same issues that everyone has, it's parking and it's the traffic. I'm really concerned about how that four-way stop sign is going to work, you know, what kind of queuing we're going to have, are we going to have traffic backed up so it's hard to get out of Grove, or are we going to have traffic backed up the other way so it's not hard to get out of steeple chase? So, I just think these are, these are some of the things that we really need to feel comfortable with.
You know, I have a lot of little comments, and I will skip over those. I think, you know, long, sort of winded way of getting at it, my concern about this project generally is that it's too large. Given the last two projects that we approved and are now under construction, coupled with the three hundred and four units from this, you know, that's a lot of people in the city, and not the fiscal impact on the schools, but just the impact on the population. So, it's over a thousand people in a community of twelve thousand people, and just right there, that's a big impact. We've talked a little bit about this with the acquisition of land that the city recently came into, and the massive residential development that could go there. That seems to have a tremendous unthought-through impact on what is a small town, a small community still. So, I think, and I hate to be the guy who's contrary to this, although it's great that the land has been assembled, I think it's creating a project that's just, just too large, and I try to think of a more creative way to say it, but there it is. The second question I have, from a long-range planning standpoint, and it got mentioned, the dense urban exciting retail, you know, this will be, I think, the sixth project that I've sat through that's going to have dense urban exciting retail, and they're all in non-contiguous, totally different parts of the city. And I'm starting to wonder, and particularly with this one, I don't think Taco Bell's going anywhere in my lifetime, I'm pretty sure the bank's not going anywhere, we're creating these little pockets of dense, exciting urban retail that don't really connect to anything else, and I don't really see that changing anytime, which leads me back to, I think this project on the whole is probably just too large. So, I think I'm probably someone who is not as excited about the consolidation of all this land. And I have questions, but I took my time, so.
I'd like to echo Rob's concerns. I've been commenting like that since we first looked at it in the first EDC meeting. So, I'm going to support what you said, but I'd like to move on to, if in fact this does move, some problems I have with your, with your traffic flow. Turning left from Broad Street, on Broad Street is almost an impossible thing up there, within a half a block of that light. I think you're going to have some real problems with how you're moving traffic in and out of there. And I'd also like to ask if you have, I know you've talked to the neighbors, have, aside from the fact that you're thinking of helping them with residential restrictions on the parking there, have you addressed any of their concerns? Yes, please.
Well, I'll start with the stormwater management. I think there's going to be a considerable improvement to stormwater management than what you see right now. And I think the neighbors on Park Avenue were pleased with our explanation of that. Your other question was about traffic access.
Traffic, yeah.
You know, I can't disagree with what you said about turning left on the West Broad Street. I've tried to do that myself in peak times. We have had a traffic study done, and we've analyzed very carefully the flow of the traffic in this, in and out of this project. This project has reduced the number of access points in this block from eleven to four access points, so that's going to be an improvement from the standpoint of safety.
You started out, you had eleven?
No, if you, if you look at this block today, there are actually eleven access points, and they're full access points. So, I think that we have brought it down to four, and that's going to improve safety. And I think that also, these mixed-use projects, most of them have one or two access points. Having three or four access points, as we do, will prevent or alleviate the possibility of traffic backing up inside the project, or backing up on the city streets, trying to get into the project. So, I think we've put a lot of thought into how the access works, and to create a really effective flow of the vehicles coming in and out of the project. We've also spent a lot of time, especially even more recently, in working on the pedestrian access for the project, and opening up the interior of the project, so that there's a lot of attractive, walkable environments in the project. And I think that the Park Avenue neighbors are very interested in something that looks nicer, and that's attractive for people to walk to and from. And they were really pressing us to try to do more with the pedestrian traffic. So, I would say that I think we've gone a long ways to improve that part of it. And I will say this, the, the single-family homes that sit on Park Avenue was originally not in the project, and we all were discussing with staff and with the neighbors and about, well, more so with staff, trying to figure out what's the best way to transition with Park Avenue. And we, we came across, or came upon, the, doing the single-family homes and creating that neighborhood feel there on Park Avenue. And the neighbors, we thought, when we met with them and showed them the first drawings of that, that they liked that a lot. We were not getting, as I recall, this was back probably in the summer, we were not getting a lot of excitement about doing another park.
I just have one other quick question, and that, that has to do with the hotel. And the method that you were explaining, having a pod there, at which the hotel then, you would provide that, and then the hotel would go up from that, who controls the architecture of the hotel, then?
The project has a master plan for the architect, and so, it's almost like a, it's a community architectural standard, and they're going to have to fit into that standard.
So, they couldn't comment, say, this doesn't go along with our standard way of building, you know, we have a couple of footprints, this is what we do when that, we're not going to change that.
We've had that conversation, and that's not acceptable. And I'm sure Council, and you, and a lot of people here in the community are going to have a lot to say so about the architecture and keeping a certain standard, and we made that very clear to the hotel development company.
Okay, thank you.
And we've kind of reached a consensus on that, I can say.
I think we're done.
Thanks. Mr. Deska, do you have some comments?
Russ, I'm sorry, I didn't see you there.
That's all right. I'll be really brief, since we'll get another crack at this. I was, my comment is a little different than Rob's, I'm much more excited about the consolidation. I think this, while this is a very large project, and that concerns me, I think this corner is highly underutilized, and I'm excited to see some improvements happen to it. I'm not a big fan of the two homes, the single-family homes, and when, you know, from the aerial view, my initial reaction is, I don't see much green space other than those homes. If there's not interest in a park there, I mean, I'm assuming we're meeting the requirement for the amount of green space, but my initial reaction is, it's very limited and located on these single-family homes, and I'm not sure how all that counts. There's also, there was a comment about how it being energy efficient, and we've recently said that we want lead silver, does it meet that requirement?
That's our plan, to do lead silver.
Okay.
That's what we're proposing.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to Council, why don't we start, maybe with Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad that the project has come forward tonight, and for my part, I see many faces from the Park and Grove and West neighborhood. I'm really pleased that they've come forward tonight to listen to the presentation. For my part, I'm eager for the public process of this project to begin, to obtain the sense of not only the surrounding communities, but of our city at large. And that I think that with the active participation of the city, staff, boards of commissions, and of course, City Council, that we'll be able to help shape the final vision. And realizing that time is short to do all those things, I think that we just have to ask ourselves whether in fact our final vision for our city going forward is a project like this, or are we really happy to have a convenience store, a gas station, and an ethnic laundromat on that corner? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Z. Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Well, in reading the comments from the neighborhood, while we appreciate that you've met with them, it would appear that there are many, many issues yet to be resolved. And generally speaking, when we move forward with a project, we try to have a number of these fundamental issues resolved, and that hasn't occurred yet with the neighborhood issues. The VIPIS comments also raise some important comments. Now, with regard to the residential, I agree with the comments have already been made, way too many, way too large, way too dense. With respect to the commercial, frankly, it, and this is a question I had, because the prior drawings that we had called for a drugstore there at the corner, and yet now you're talking about retail. I don't think the city needs another drugstore, and yet, all your documents talk about, I think you used the term junior box drugstore. So, at a key intersection like this, we're going to have a drugstore. So, if that's still in the plan, I have serious issues with that. I don't think the city needs that. There are lots of other kinds of commercial occupancies or entertainment occupancies that would generate significant revenue, and I think would give the city some things that it doesn't have. The numbers, you know, we often see developer numbers differ from staff numbers, and I appreciate that you put some numbers up there. I don't know the basis of your numbers, and I don't know if they've gone through the city model, and I don't know what your assumptions are for commercial, for commercial uses, because that would clearly affect the numbers. Going back to residential, we know we already have overcrowded schools, so I can't see why adding three hundred more residential units of this type is in the public interest. Finally, on the hotel, it's not a real hotel with meeting space, it's not like the Marriott in Boston, it's not a real hotel, it's basically an extended-stay hotel, sort of an off-the-interstate type hotel model. So, I'm seeing a lot of issues, a lot of neighborhood issues, I'm seeing very little that the city wants, I'm seeing a very high risk factor in terms of additional residential. And while I very much would like this developed, and I'm very anxious to work with you to do that, I see a lot of fundamental issues that need to be resolved here before this project is ready to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Mr. Baruch?
Thank you. Some general comments and observations, I'm going to try to keep these high-level, some of those that were expressed by the EDC as a whole, but I wanted to echo as far as my shared views with those. One was the need to see more commercial usage in this development and less residential, and there's various ways of doing that, and one is enlarging the hotel and reducing the residential components. I'd also be interested in determining whether a senior independent housing component can be brought to this project. We talked about some of the traffic issues, I won't belabor those, but those are going to be serious concerns that I've got with this project moving forward. Stormwater, I think we can talk about that if this project does go through, I want to get a sense of how it's going to improve the current situation, and how much better the situation is going to be if this project does go forward. I think fundamentally, there's got to be a linkage, if there is going to be a residential component to this project, of tying that to any of the hotel products and any of the retail as key components. So, the notion of, we're going to build the residential and hope the hotel goes forward separately, or we're going to build the podium for the hotel, hope that the hotel will actually get built, and that the retail will come in, is just not anything that I would support. And I'm not saying that that's what you all are envisioning, but there's got to be a way, and I'm glad that Mr. Taves, our acting city attorney, is here to hear this, so perhaps he can put his thoughts along with your attorney and land use attorney to wed those various components. But having a situation where the city bears the residential and ultimately doesn't end up with a hotel, or the retail that's been discussed, is just not what I'm interested in, and that's got to come through in whether it's tying it to occupancy permits, et cetera, there's various ways of doing that. But I'd like to see that in writing, not just, this is what we're hoping we'll get out of the project. And then, I share Vice Mayor Snyder's concerns about the drug use in the, in the corner as being an anchor. I really, or drugstore use. I realized it after it came out of my mouth. And that's as, as I've got a sick one, a little one that's sick at home right now, so. And then as far as the hotel, get a better sense of what that is, and really, I think it's a different brand that we're talking about, but if there's a way of incorporating conference space and making it something that's not off interstate sort of hotel, is what I'd be looking for as far as the hotel use. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baruch. Ms. Gonnely?
Thank you for your presentation. As I look through all these documents ahead of the meeting, the difference between what's there now and what you're proposing is huge, and it's easy to look at that and go, wow, that's really what we want in Falls Church. And there are a couple of things that I really like about this project, and a couple of concerns I have, and they're similar to everyone else. The first is the impact on the schools. You put in for capital contribution to the schools. I think we have to, as a city, look at that model and just think about the I think we have to, as a city, look at that model and just think about the operating costs to the schools as well, of students that come in and go out because there'll be rental apartments. The second thing is the surface parking, how much surface parking is on the first level?
There's 123 spaces on the surface dedicated to retail, and then there will be some additional retail parking down below.
Okay.
You can leave that on, and then we won't have the 30 seconds delay.
And then, the Grove Avenue parking, Grove Avenue cut-through, that's just an issue that is there now and would need to be addressed with this, and I appreciate what you've said, and I'm sure the neighbors who are all here will also have some input into that one as well. You showed the WNOD trail with a different path, and you mentioned that you were planning to make a $100,000 donation to the park authority? Is that, are those two things tied together? Is that path in the works already, or do they need your donation?
What you're seeing there is a proposal to change the path, so it has a more perpendicular crossing of West Street. I don't think that's funded yet. We were proposing to make a contribution to that park there, and that money could be used to help realign that trail, which is important, because I think people are having a hard time crossing at an angle and seeing cars.
Right, and I drive there a lot, and I bike there a lot, and so from both sides...
I bike there, too.
It's really difficult, isn't it?
It is. And it's difficult to see people, they can't see you when you're crossing by the car.
Right, right, and then traffic backs up on either end, and it's hard to tell.
That is an existing plan, but the park authority has basically internal approved that, so it's not going to be able to be realigned.
So your $100,000 would go towards that? Do you know how much more?
It can.
10, do you say 10? Oh, sorry.
It can. We haven't really, we haven't targeted the money directly ourselves, we've just said that we're going to make it available to help with the park across the street.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to make one clarification, if I may. Mr. Snyder, the numbers that we are putting up on the screen actually came from some discussions with the economic department, and they have run some preliminary numbers, I understand. They don't, I don't think that they are finished with their analysis, but we have run the project square footages and uses through their financial model, and that's how we have arrived at those numbers.
And the data is...
But it's preliminary.
And is the data based on a drugstore being at the corner?
It's based on a pharmacy and some other retail that we were contemplating putting in there, and the hotel.
At the corner of West and Broad.
Right, that's correct.
Okay, anything else?
I, my comments don't differ substantially from anyone else's. I'm pleased to see the consolidation, I'm concerned about the density, I'm particularly concerned about the traffic impacts and what will happen as a result of the parking. One thing you didn't mention specifically, but what is your model for the residential parking? Will people pay for that separately? Will everybody have an assigned space? How, I'm interested in that, just in terms of the potential spillover.
I can answer that for you. The plan for the parking is dedicated, secure parking for the residential that will be separate from the commercial. For the hotel, we are proposing dedicated spaces for the hotel, that would be for hotel guests only. And then there will be retail parking that's dedicated to the retail, and only exclusively used for retail customers. And those spaces will be marked with various signs and so forth.
I know, and this is just a sort of a logistical thing, but will each unit have a space? Will each unit have access to the general space? What happens if there's more cars than spaces at any given point?
Well, that can be controlled by the property manager, and there will be spaces available for residents to park their car, and they'll have to get a parking sticker, and they will be designated as a reserved space. In some cases, there can be some reserved spaces that can go at a premium charge, if you will, and then there's open spaces that you have to have a sticker for. And the property manager will manage the available spaces for, as far as the stickers that are going out to residents. And that's something that's done in many of these types of buildings and projects.
Sorry, this is also just a small logistical question, but how many spaces for bicycles are there?
Don't know the answer to that yet. That's something that we want to provide.
Karen doesn't know, nobody knows.
Spaces, we're thinking in this building, bike storage. You know, for us, being next to the park is a selling point, it's a very big amenity for the building, so we think that there will be bike storage, bike spaces, and there'll be a lot of biking from the residents, taking advantage of the proximity of the trail.
Maybe I pronounced the theater, but we're really planning for three stages of bike down in the residential parking areas, the secured, covered areas, we'll have secured, covered bicycle parking areas for the actual residents, and then we'll have the covered area spaces in the retail area, and then we'll also have bicycle spaces in that pocket park that actually connects to the park across the street, the trail across the street, so sort of three levels of bicycle piece. We anticipate a great deal of bicycle traffic here.
Anything else? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation, thank you for bringing us a project which represents a significant consolidation of land, that's a challenge, as others have said, that we confront often in the city, and you have surmounted that challenge right at the outset. As you can hear, we're all over the map on this, this is fitting and proper in the fine city of Falls Church. My place on the map in the city is, as a resident of the West End, I have no financial interest in, of course, the project, but my vision for, you know, the West End when we moved there in 1985 was that it would be a walkable place. We bought the house so that we could walk to the metro, we did that for many years, even after the kids were born, we took them up in strollers to the metro and downtown daycare. But after 29 years, we are still on the West End woefully short of the kind of amenities that are enjoyed in several other parts of town. And I view this project as an opportunity to address some of the problems that we have now in this area, which are problems of longstanding, and they're going to require some, I think, scale and resources to address. The traffic situation at the intersection, we've talked about, the pedestrian safety, the bike trail crossing, the stormwater issue. Most of the issues that I've read about in the letters and comments that have received from the folks in the neighborhood are, they are problems. And I view this project as an opportunity to finally get some resolution to those problems, and to create the kind of walkable community that I envisioned when we moved here in 1985. Specifically, I think the retail component is of concern to a lot of people in town, because we have built some buildings here where the first-floor retail has been slow to be absorbed. Okay, you, street sense guys, you know all about this, you need to provide us with information and hard data that explain why it is that you think we need another hotel, that's not necessarily your area, but another hotel, what's the market, you know, hospitality evaluation services, my wife has a friend who's worked for them for many years, and that's what she does, goes all around the country and tells communities whether they can or cannot support a hotel. We need to know that, because you hear people write, "Why would we have a hotel?" We need to understand, I think, the kind of retail that this area, this end of town will support. I mean, I have a blooming idea whether we can support another drugstore or not, I perceive that we can, because, you know, I walk up to the Rite Aid and, okay, you know, I probably would walk to another drugstore if I had another option. At any rate, I don't want to go into too deep a detail, but I think we do need to hear from the retail component of this very forcefully, with an explanation of how is you're really going to fill up this ground floor with all the marvelous things that we do want on the West End. Finally, my last question is really a process question. I had to miss the EDC meeting because my plane was delayed when we talked about this. Are we going to go to first reading on this from here, or are we, what's the next step from here, I guess?
Well, that remains to be determined, I don't think we're going to decide that tonight, so I don't have an answer for you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I've got a few questions as well. First, thank you all for coming and for your presentation. I do like the idea of consolidation, but I have a number of concerns. One is traffic, it's very complicated, the circulation that both exists now and what you're proposing, and I think we really need to spend some time and work through those issues. I think myself, other members of council, and the community in particular, are very interested in your proposed solutions, which we really didn't get into tonight. I know, maybe it's a work in progress, but I think that's going to be critical to the progress of your project, is how you propose to deal with those critical issues. I do, I'm also concerned about the number of units, as has been expressed by others. A Walgreens at the corner, I have to say, for me, is underwhelming. There may be a great need in this world for more Walgreens, more drugstores and Rite Aids, but as someone who's involved in this decision-making process, I think a lot of folks would be more excited about this project if you were able to deliver some retailers that people feel there's a real need and demand for, and create some excitement about your project. The last several special exceptions, for example, one has been a Harris Teeter, which is, hopefully will bring a number of people to this city, create a lot of revenue from that use. We have a Fresh Market, another specialty, high-end grocery store that I think a lot of people perceive there's a need for, and I just don't see it for a Walgreens. I understand that we can't tell you what to put in your store, your development, but I think that there is a desire to have something that is perceived as more of a community benefit, community need. I saw your design of the ground floor retailer, which reminds me much of Pentagon Row, Bethesda Road, as far as look and feel. However, it's hard for us to understand whether there's a true commitment for that, will that be delivered? In other words, every project we approve, everyone provides they're going to have vibrant ground floor retail, but we often end up with Takwondo Studios and nail salons and things that are underwhelming. And so I would say to you, to the extent you're able to provide a commitment to even a type of retailer, you know, we'll commit to 25% of our ground floor Airbnb restaurants, something like that, we can have a greater degree of certainty that we may get what you're proposing to deliver to us, a vibrant ground floor. Along that same line, I see that you have an internal drive aisle or drive-through for your drugstore. Got to say, to me, that really eats up a lot of your retail space, and if you could find a more creative way to drive that through, instead of a big U, I think you'd get more retail space in that ground floor, maybe a little bit more vibrant, vibrancy as well. The, I would also support a pocket park instead of the two single-family houses, as has been mentioned by others, and I think given your proximity to the bike trail, it would be nice if you would consider also something like Capital Bike Share as part of your project, so that people can easily get to and from your project from the bike trail. I think that's all I've got, unless anyone else has anything pressing, why don't we wind that up? Again, thank you for your time tonight, and there'll be plenty more discussions for the folks in the audience, and with planning commission and council as well, and with the developers, so thank you again, we appreciate it. Why don't we go ahead and take a five-minute break, so we can break up and then reconvene with just city council? Thank you very much. If we can, let's go ahead and get seated and continue on with the public hearing tonight. Okay, if we could, let's go ahead and get started. Members of the public who are not here for this hearing, maybe you could step outside, so we can go ahead and get started. All right, Mr. Shields, are you ready for our next item, which is some of the budgets for, yes, from the budgets of some of our departments?
That's right. Thank you, Mayor Tarter. Members of council, tonight's theme for the initial jump into the budget is land use, infrastructure, and development. And so we have Jim Snyder, who will present on the Development Services budget. Rick Goff will present on the Economic Development budget. And then Mike Collins with Public Works. Then we'd like to shift gears, talk about the senior tax relief proposal that would go forward on first reading at your next meeting. And while the City Treasurer and Nancy Vincent with Human Services are here for tax relief, let them present their budgets very briefly as well. Before we dive into each of those budget areas, I just wanted to note, we did have a town hall meeting last Saturday. It was probably the best attended that we've had in years. And I think a very interesting discussion, very interesting questions. And it is on tape, and it's available to be viewed on our website. And so I appreciate everybody, all of the people who showed up for that, and most of our council members were there as well. And one other thing, just by way of introduction, if I could just turn council to page one of your budget books. When we go through our budget presentations, we will try to tie things to this book. We'd like to use this book as sort of our organizing document and speak to it. But before we go to the individual departments, I think it is useful, just for a very quick notation, that the budget document does have a lot of useful items in it. And particularly for our new members of council, a couple of things I would highlight. The city manager's message, of course, is sort of a message, organizing message about the budget. In the introduction section, there are handy things, like the city org chart, the fund structure on page 31, and then our city policies. If you need a quick reference on our existing city financial policies, that's on page 33. It's worth putting a tab on page 43. That's the fund summaries. So if you want to, for any department, you want to know what their delta is in terms of what this budget is proposed to last year, that's the spot to go. And you can see just the summary of every departmental budget that we have. We have the position summaries, the changes in positions on page 53, a review of all of the city tax rates on page 55. And then our finance department puts together a financial summary, which has fund balance projections and debt service projections from the CIP on page 56 and 58. This document is meant, it's a very utilitarian document. It's there to be used, and so I just wanted to highlight a couple of those things. Our presentations, again, Jim, will lead us off, our lead-off batter this year. But this is your time. It's meant to be useful for you. In terms of prep, we've asked department directors just to provide a quick overview, sort of thematically, what's going on in their budget, what's changing? And then tie that back to the numbers that are right there before you, so you can sort of draw the connection between what's going on and how that shows up in numbers. And so I'll ask Jim to take us with the first one.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's my pleasure to represent the Department of Development Services. We work through the planning, zoning, building safety issues of the city. We have a counter on the third floor of the West Wing that's open most days, serving many, many customers. So we're working on everything from the conceiving of plans, to the negotiation of plans, to the zoning evaluation of plans, to the building permit review, inspection, and certificates of occupancy.
The Department of Developmental Services starts on page 192.
If you look at 192, you'll see a org chart, which shows these three areas, planning, zoning, and building safety, supported by Development Services Counter, where we do intake processing and coordination. Our group, without administrative assistance, staffs more than 120 meetings of the Planning Commission, City Council. We also have primary staff for Citizen Advisory Committee on Transportation, the Historic Architectural Review Board, the Historical Commission, the Economic Development Authority. We provide help for them and the Economic Development Committee. We also staff the Architectural Advisory Board and the Board of Zoning Appeals. And of course, we provide assistance to the city manager, and the city attorney, and the city council, and of course, the planning commission. At the counter, we helped more than 4,000 visitors and 6,000 phone calls, and about 1,889 permits in FY 2013. And this year, we're also on a fast pace, so it's been a busy, busy time. In terms of planning, you may be aware of the, some of the resolution of some of the zoning issues, such as the split lot issue, the approval of two major projects, the Harris Teeter project and the Lincoln Properties mixed-use project. We also worked and did fast-tracking of commercial projects, filling retail spaces and the Child Development Center, as well as outfitting office buildings that have been vacant. We staff transportation program, and we're also trying to do long-range planning and update the comprehensive plan. Transportation planning has been a huge focus and has consumed much of the staff time that we might otherwise be spending more on long-range planning, updating the city's comprehensive plan. We have been focusing on the Mobility for All Modes, which is the replacement for the transportation chapter. Our budget has pretty much, is pretty much people and the things that support them. We have been doing small area plans, using existing staff, so we do not have a big consulting budget. The approval of the South Washington Street Plan and the drafting of the City Center Plan, now called Downtown Plan, are a couple of the main accomplishments there. We've also supported the city manager and the city attorney on the work that has been done on the boundary adjustment. We're working with the schools, Joint Schools and City Council Committee to figure out, help figure out what should happen with that new important part of the city. We have been trying to modernize, and we've done a pilot electronic building plan review. This is on a very limited basis, just using our existing resources. We have found that it does save time, can save money, and reduce the amount of paper. We'd like to do more of that next year. We have a very active building safety group. Basically, we have three people doing that work. They both review the plans and then do the inspections of the projects that get done. With the projects that have been approved, we're going to need an additional senior person to do the plan review and also do inspections, so we can keep up with these major projects that are coming through the city. It's important that we be able to use funds that are coming through that way, so that we can support that activity. And there has been a large increase in money that's been coming through the city with those permits, some of which can be used to do that. In terms of looking at our unmet needs, as I mentioned, the idea of needing a future senior plan review, building inspector, is something we think can be funded through fees that we're taking in to accomplish those permits and support those permits. We have a couple of vehicles that are old and need replacement. On the planning side, we have identified the need to try to have another transportation person to free up one of our key planning people, Paul Stotter, to do more work on the longer-range comprehensive plan work. As you all know, transportation funding in the state is complex. We all need to keep our eye on the ball, and so we are hoping that possibly some funds from the state transportation funding can be used to do that. We do hope to implement an office automation administrative effort using updates to Chapter 15 fees. Our Chapter 15 fees that cover planning and building safety and zoning, were last updated three years ago, so it's time for us to update those. We're looking at a 10% increase on those. Also, several years ago, we identified, and some of you may be familiar with, other jurisdictions which have an automation fee and other fees that help support computers, equipment, and staff. For example, in Arlington, they have a 5% fee and a 15% fee that they put on top of each permit, that gives them the ability to have more capacity from both people and equipment to better service that portion of the county's work. We would be proposing a 10% fee that would help us get equipment and also help support an administrative person who could do scanning and do other back-office work to support that effort. Again, this would be funded through that approach. Our per-square-foot cost on our buildings is 50 cents. I think Arlington's at 75%. We'd be looking at a 10% increase to 55 cents, plus our 10% fee that we would hope could support these other efforts, without taking away from other parts of the city budget. So in summary, we've been very busy. We've had a lot of successes. There's a lot of revenue coming to the city. Some of that revenue can be used to support the building safety needs. We hope some of the state funding can be used to enhance our planning effort that will benefit several departments. And then other fees that will still keep us in line and below other jurisdictions can help us with office automation and give us badly needed administrative staff. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thanks. Are there any brief, quick questions on this budget? All right, two. I'm going to start with Phil, and then maybe Nader next. Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. Any anticipation of more work involving split lot development here between now and when the deadline comes in August? Have you seen any signs of that?
Well, we are monitoring it. There is a certain amount of work that goes on with that, but I'd say our biggest amount of work, and we may see somewhat of a surge as we get closer. And the manager asked me to give us full reports, where we're tracking it. We'll give you a report plus a map of where we are with that. I think there will be some additional work, but I think our biggest amount of work is going to be working with these big projects as they go forward, because we're going to be, start construction, excavation. And then also, as we may be doing more work with the whole schools and annexation or boundary adjustment area. So it's certainly one additional area of need, but we'll have others as well.
Okay, that, thank you. That leads me to my other question, which was about big capital projects. I mean, the one you mentioned is, of course, the biggest, but also City Hall and the library. I mean, to the degree that you, you know, support the work that the Planning Commission does on those, do you feel like you've got the horsepower to move those things along and, you know, reach a conclusion on them sometime?
Well, there will be site plans associated, I believe, with City Hall and the library, so there'll be a certain amount of work there. We would not be taking fees for those things.
Right, so I'm asking, because you're not going to get paid for that. You've just got to do it.
I think we are, why, I guess we're talking about how the schools, we do now, we are responsible now, our building safety people, for the two schools that are now in the city, in terms of just making sure that we know they're operating well and they're safe and any mechanical or other kinds of issues at the middle school and high school, because those have really been in Fairfax's realm. So we now have two very important public buildings that our building safety staff and fire marshal need to be in charge of. So that's an added responsibility. So we're very thin in terms, not me physically, but the staff.
I hear you. And with that, I yield the floor.
All right, Mr. Baruch.
Jim, you mentioned the building safety inspector positions. Looking at the notebook, so that's not funded need right now? So you're asking for potentially an additional inspector?
We believe that we can use funds that we are taking in, because we've brought in, because of approvals of projects, funds, fees that are charged for these major projects that can help support a position there for a period, for the period of time that those projects will be coming forward.
So you think you can support that in the fee structure that you have now?
We believe, we believe so, and we've been working with the manager and Richard La Conde to do that.
Let me put it this way. I would have serious concerns if we are not, if we're approving projects and don't have the capacity to make sure that they're being built safely, et cetera. And the city's had a history of having issues with developers and things going awry. I don't want to see that again. So if there is a funding need, I'd like to know about it while we're on this budget topic. But safety core issues, when we're getting the amount of development that we're seeing in the city, are great issues. But if we're having safety things that are not being done, oversight that's not getting done, I'd like to know about it. We need to figure out ways of funding it. I view that as a core mission, and if the fees aren't high enough, we got to talk about it.
Well, that's a real concern for us also. We will have a surplus in fees this year, and so we will have a proposal later to carry those forward, once they've all been received, and carry them forward over multiple years, so that we can support a position to do this plan review and inspections at least over three years, because that's how long these projects will take to build. But I would, I would just like to note that the staff that we have right now are extremely competent people. And they, they are all over these projects. And they, when they see something wrong, they catch it, because they're very experienced and they really know the business. And I think, so the person we want to hire is that type of person who will hit the ground at full speed and not be, you know, an entry-level type of person.
And I'll say, on the safety issues, those are, the reason why I raise it is because it's such an important aspect to the public, and the fees are so, you know, they're fair. I mean, I know that I've had home, you know, what I thought was a relatively plumbing, easy plumbing issue, but just pulled the permit anyways, because that's what you're, I didn't really need to, but I did anyways, and it turned out that there were some issues. The inspector caught it, was great about it, and we were able to deal with it. So they did a fantastic job, but they're really public safety issues that I think are really important, go to the core of what we should be doing. So I would encourage you, to the manager, on however that works out, either bring it to the council's attention, or manage it if we can through current fees or surplus fees, or if we need or if we need to do a fee increase. I just think that, again, it's not a want, it's a must-do.
We agree. There's no, no compromise on this at all.
Your budget amendment that we presented recently includes funding for inspectors to get us through the end of the fiscal year. While we develop a plan that will handle the other two or three years that we anticipate that we're gonna need the inspectors, so we, we've already started trying to address it.
Thank you. Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I strongly concur with my colleagues that having adequate inspection is, is a must from both the safety perspective, but also from a response perspective. So, most of the issues I've been hearing is that there just isn't, aren't enough people to, to go around and call for an inspection on Tuesday. They say we can't get to you until Thursday, just because of the way things work out, and maybe we'll get to you next week. It just slows the process down. I can't help but think that with this incredible split lot decision that was passed last year, that you're going to have a major ramp-up in the need for inspectors this coming fall. I'm noticing with dismay here that the amount proposed in '15 is actually, represents a huge reduction from '13 and '14, so I just don't see how you're able to meet that with the 12% reduction, unless, what you're not telling us is that the amount of revenue generated from applications is going to far exceed your requirement, you can pay for that, out of funds received. So, if that's what I'm hearing, and going back to your, on your famous pages 40 and 44, I looked at it earlier, maybe just too many numbers, maybe it's because I was tired from shoveling snow, but I just couldn't figure out, based on your representations, how much you're taking in with revenue and to be able to fund these positions. So, is that, is that somewhere that I can just look at easily, or is that not in this book?
Well, Development Services is all in one place. So, one, page 199 does have the, the full picture. And so, what, what there is, is a 4.24% increase in funding for Development Services. The fees are going up, so the support from the general fund is going down by 12.6%. The additional positions would be done outside of this budget action as a carry-forward later in the year, once all the fees are actually collected. And we know what that final amount is, we'll wanna carry forward that full amount into FY '15.
So, does it make sense just to stop it there? If we're going to increase the development fee, shouldn't we make this more of a profit center?
Well, I think that's a good point. Profit center, we're not there yet, certainly, but to cover our costs, that has been something we've aspired to. We're not there yet, and we're not even there. So, that's part of the discussion that Jim is saying about increasing the fees. I think even with those increases, we probably won't be at 100% cost recovery, but, you know, as you can tell by these numbers.
And we do have, I mean, our inspectors, we review plans, and then those same people do the work in the field, so, you know, we, we are doing both sides of it, that...
And that's not a bad thing. I mean, certainly...
It's not a bad thing, but if you have a limited number of people, and, and that's, I think, the need for some additional manpower. If someone's sick or if something happens, you know, you can, you can really lose some capacity.
Well, if you do look at this in more perspective of a profit center, maybe you could provide that analysis to the Budget Finance Committee and let them advise council on, on the benefits and the downsides of doing that. Thank you.
Actually, much. Last comment, Mary Beth, unless there's anything else pressing.
Yeah, there's just a couple of things you mentioned that I had questions. First of all, there's a huge amount of work coming out of your office every time we see something. There's just huge amounts. You mentioned the number of meetings that your department staffed. Can you say that number again?
I think about 120.
120 meetings? And how much staff time goes into preparing for those meetings?
A lot. We have done, I don't, we have done some look at the planners in terms of how much comp time they're using, because that's where a lot of that is, and I could get you those numbers, but it's a big amount of money, a big amount of time, so it affects your other work time, particularly on the, the non-management side. Those folks have to use their comp time, et cetera, so it's, they're, you see them here a lot, and that's, they are here a lot.
Right. So, is there, would there be a way in the upcoming fiscal year to reduce that number of meetings? Can you see a way that we could do that?
It's a very meeting-centric place.
Yes.
We'd love to, we would like to work with you to come up with a plan to reduce the number of meetings, which requires, I think, everybody's participation in that discussion about how we conduct meetings differently, how we conduct business differently. We can't reduce the number of meetings if we conduct business the same old way. So, it has to be something that people say, "Okay, I get that. I'll, I'll buy into that, and, and let's do business differently."
Okay. And then, one more question about meetings, which is, it has become frustrating that the Planning Commission and the City Council meet at the same time.
Mm-hmm.
Is that one of those meetings that could be addressed, that they're not meeting at the same time, so that we meet on different nights?
Mm-hmm.
I'd just like to toss that one in there.
It could be, the, the one benefit on the staff side is we're here anyway, so it might mean one, it might mean an additional evening.
I see what you're saying, yes.
But there's a, but both groups do meet a lot. I mean, the council meets twice plus work sessions, and the commission meets twice. We've been trying to have their land use items on one meeting and work sessions, which are needed to go into more policy on others, and I think the manager's also been working with the council in that regard, too, so we can have them spaced out, so they're complementary in terms of how things move from the Planning Commission to the council. The joint sessions are helpful, I think, on big projects, so we all hear what's going on.
Thank you. I tell you, with respect to your notion about efficiencies and meetings and the like, the Government Ops Committee, Subcommittee is, I believe, looking into that, and I look forward to hearing their recommendations about how we can more efficiently conduct business. So, Mr. Snyder, thank you. I think you guys do a great job of the limited budgets. I know those area plans are a great deal of work, and you keep cranking them out, so thank you for that.
Very cost-effectively, too.
That's right. And speaking of efficiency, efficient meetings, let's keep on trucking with what we got here. Rick, thank you.
Thanks. The EDO section of the budget appears on pages 89 through 91 of your binder. I'll be very succinct about our need and vision for a new position. I'll just preface by saying that it's our goal to operate a full-service economic development office that provides business retention, expansion, and attraction services. We provide staffing for a very active EDA, and we produce volumes of analytical work on new development proposals, as well as the performance of projects previously approved and built. Expectations are very high in the city for the highest and best use of its scarce commercially-zoned land. We see our role as crucial in helping the city attract the best options and making the right decisions about new development, especially new mixed-use and commercial investment. We've operated our office with two full-time professional staff since 2010, when we lost a full-time position to the organization's downsizing. We've absorbed those administrative functions into our daily routine, but we're now at a point where we need another professional on staff to handle new initiatives and enable us to better serve the city's and business community's needs. Our vision for the position is this: We need an experienced economic development professional with 21st-century marketing skills to help us better sell the city to business and development prospects. This function will be especially important as plans for the Haycock Road properties begin to gel. We need someone who can also help with special projects, like implementation of the small-area plans. Specifically, work will need to be done in the city center area to ensure better parking, to create incentives programs, to encourage shared parking agreements, property reinvestment, public and private land swaps, and infill development. There'll also be a role in business attraction, special event planning, and in planning and implementing public and private improvements in the area. Looking to another area of need, the EDA's land banking initiative is not formalized as yet, but should it be, a lot of legwork will be needed to identify strategic acquisitions and to handle due diligence involved in the purchase, ownership, and disposition of properties acquired for the program. In economic development, as long as we have a reasonably strong economy, we're gonna find, as we have since the end of the recession, that investment builds on investment. I think we're just at the beginning of a surge of new development in the city. We need additional professional staff resources now to keep pace with it and keep it fueled. So, to summarize, our addition has one proposed new initiative. It involves hiring a full-time staff position at a total salary and benefits cost of $100,000. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions? Mr. Snyder?
Thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor. I would feel a lot better about this new position if it were really focused on bringing in commercial development, but I'm hearing it's way too diffuse. It's gonna do this, it's gonna do that, it's gonna assist with land banking, and all these other things. And I guess my question is, well, I want some data, that is, how much of the time in the current EDO is actually spent on bringing new commercial activity into the city? Not preparing staff reports and all the other stuff. I really wanna know what we're doing to get the kind of businesses that we don't have into the city. I mean, everything from, you can't buy a shirt in the city, you can't, it just goes on and on and on about the retail that isn't here, the entertainment that isn't here, and I really wanna get at this. And the Economic Development Office has to be the thin edge of the wedge to do it, and yet, we're not getting it, except at a very high price with residential, and even then, we're not getting what we really want. So, I guess, my question is, how are we gonna assure that we're actually gonna get more power at that point of contact, which is getting new commercial development here, to meet the needs of the community and to be regional draws? So, I'm all about, you know, adding to your staff if we're gonna get that, but if we're gonna get another person who's diffuse, sort of half a planner, engaged in sort of the political discussions, rather than highly incentivized to new, to, to bring new business? And also, can we incentivize based upon a commission basis? Can we get somebody here who, whose salary could be dramatically higher if they bring in significant amounts of more commercial activity? So, those are a bunch of questions. You don't need to answer them tonight, but I wanted to put that on the record. I am interested in putting more resources here, but only if I get a different kind of, of end result out than we've been able to get so far.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Other comments? Anything else? Okay. Mr. Baruch?
Just on the notion of the economic development specialists being brought in, I think that's something that the city is gonna need, but I do share some of Vice Mayor Snyder's concerns. I think what would be helpful is, you know, before the budget process is over, having some clear metrics for that position, exactly what that person will deliver within a given amount of time, something that we can measure performance on. Is that, would that be helpful, Vice Mayor Snyder?
Yeah, absolutely.
And again, I'm viewing this as less reports. I think the city's been doing a great job on that, but I think the, the marketing and implementing some of our strategies is, is what's key. So, that's built into the metrics. I think that would be helpful. But I do think that there is a need for further movement in, in the Economic Development Office, but I'd like to understand what the metrics would be and how we would measure success coming forward if we do add a position. But, high level, I do support the additional position.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I certainly support the position that you have to invest to get investment, or, another way of putting it, you have to spend money to get money. I can't help but reflecting back on my earlier comment that we need to take a closer look at making the whole development planning process more of a profit center. Could certainly fund this, and I think we need, you know, as you said earlier, a real dynamic personality in that office to, to, to be more about marketing and outreach and less about looking at land banking. Oh, yeah, last question here. I certainly understand that you guys do a lot of work taking notes and attending meetings. The student intern, is this that, that you hired? Is this something that the student intern does, or, or, maybe the better question is, do you, do you need more administrative support?
We don't currently have a student intern. The only intern we used was temporarily over a summer to help us with a specific project. I believe that we need online staff. I don't, you know, I've worked in two college towns in my career, and I've probably had two dozen interns, and I've had some great ones over time, but they don't take the place of full-time staff. And I see this position as someone with experience in the field.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Ms. Conley?
I was at a couple of EDA meetings where they talked about this position, and were very excited about the possibility of having someone as a community manager, or marketing, or tying everything together for the benefit of the local community, as well as the larger business community. So, when I read this, that it was in there, I thought that, that sounded very similar to what the EDA had been talking about and wishing for.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just one, I'm sensitive to Mr. Snyder's comments about, you know, measuring productivity of, of this new position. It would be interesting to get some information about communities that are our size and scale, and what sort of, you know, incentive structures they might have for their economic development staff. If you're looking for one specific thing to measure somebody's performance against, I would suggest that if you hire this position, you detail them to fill the unfilled retail space in the existing buildings that we've already built. That's an area that I think we're all frustrated with, and it's something that I know Rick and Becky work on, but, you know, you really have to move in with those people, I think, to get their attention. They have a lot of projects all over the country, usually. So, if you go ahead with this position, that's one suggested activity that would be very measurable. I think after a year, you'd be able to say, you know, "We had X number of meetings and they yielded this." It might help us understand whether it's ever gonna be possible to fill some of the ground-floor retail at the prices that are being asked by the owners.
Mr. Baruch, quickly?
I hate to jump in, but, Mr. Duncan, I, I think that that's really a developer function. I'm certainly not prepared to fund out of taxpayer dollars what developers should be doing. I think one thing that we can do is, through the approval process, make sure that the retail space is actual functional, rather than just listening to what the developer says, whether it's putting into voluntary proffers or conditions of use. But I don't think that the city should engage in as being brokers or marketers for individual projects. I don't think that's, that's a wise use of taxpayer dollars, in my view, but more globally, marketing the city and all the various projects, not acting as an agent on behalf of developers that couldn't deliver on their promises. So, I don't think that's what you meant, but I, I hope.
I'm glad.
I hope it's not what you meant.
I'm glad.
But, but...
You didn't think that was what I meant.
Great.
As you know, the current staff does as much of the kind of activity that I'm describing as they can. They just don't have enough time to do as much as they'd like.
Great.
At any rate, I think we...
As long as we're of like minds on that, Mr. Duncan. I think we're good.
All right. Any other comments, or does that wrap up? Thank you, Mr. Goff. We appreciate all the good work you all do.
You do.
And thanks for your presentation. Mr. Shields?
And I think that was good, good feedback on this position. Some of the other aspects of the job were a bit of a nod to reality of how our lodges are right now, in terms of the request for analysis and things like that, but if, we'd like to work with the EDA, work with you, to wall this position off, to make it very focused, as, as was described here, and, and so we appreciate that. Next up is Public Works. Mike Collins, this is, I think, Mike, is this your first work session with the City Council?
No, I've been in...
Okay.
Plenty.
Regular sessions, but at any rate.
Yes, that's right.
First budget.
What's that?
Definitely first.
It's your last haircut.
Yes.
It's my first.
That's right.
No, it seems I've brought the snow.
I just find it interesting how we have a new Public Works Director, and we've had all the snow.
I like to drum up business.
That's all happens since Stotter became mayor. It's all his.
Is this how he's not gonna say, "We need a 100% budget increase"?
I'm promoting, I'm promoting our services, that's right.
We get a page number two?
Yeah, we're...
Thirty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. LaConde. So, good evening, Council. I'm pleased to present the FY '15 Public Works budget to you tonight. I'm gonna briefly highlight some of the services we provide to the community before providing an overview of the budget. Happy to, I'll be happy to field any questions you have about the specifics at that time. So, as you know, every day, every single resident or visitor to the city utilizes our services directly, from the transportation network to the sewer utilities, our urban forest. Public Works builds, operates, and maintains all of these physical infrastructure systems.
What page are you on?
One... 139. So we, in addition to maintaining these infrastructure systems, we support the private development that we've been talking about all night long, that's so critical to the prosperity of the community. We dedicate the equivalent of one and a half full-time employees to reviewing and inspecting every development activity in the city. And this responsibility is going to increase as the pace of development continues with Rushmark, Tanner Hill, and the other new developments that you guys have been reviewing over the past couple of months. Lastly, I'd like to highlight the commitment we have to deliver the CIP, the Capital Improvement Program. We implement the facilities, the transportation, the stormwater, and the sanitary sewer components of the CIP. That, that comprises $20 million in current projects and $63 million in projects over the next five years. In, in summary, we've got a small group of people doing a lot of things. So, the budget that we've got today attempts to respond to the critical challenges which our organization faces. For DPW, these include specifically, the sale of the water system has resulted in the divestiture of some heavy equipment, which was very useful to us in snow in responding to emergencies. Second, responsible and effective investment in our infrastructure systems is critical, particularly pavement, traffic signals, bridges, walls, storm, storm and sanitary sewer. There is significant, significant capital funding, but we, we don't have the staff resources to, to implement these improvements as effectively and efficiently as we'd like. Lastly, I'd like to highlight the astonishing breadth of responsibilities for our professional staff. We have 15 professional staff striving to provide the level of service that our citizens expect across the breadth of programs that, and systems that they're requested to manage. Some examples of some of these responsibilities include the pace of development, supporting development. The pace of development has increased 60% since 2010. I mentioned earlier the significant CIP that we try to manage, and grant funding specifically in the CIP has increased 800, over 800% since 2010. There's an extraordinary overhead on grant funding for administration of that money. Lastly, fulfillment of these critical priorities leaves little time for us to effectively manage the infrastructure systems that we have. The fact is, we're not going to be able to attract critical new development or be successful in implementing capital improvements if we're continuously diverted to maintenance and infrastructure emergencies. So now, moving specifically into the budget. As I mentioned, we start on page 139. DPW's operating budget covers, spans the general fund, the sanitary sewer, and the stormwater funds. Starting with the general fund, you can see the organizational structure of us on page 139. We have nine cost centers. I'm not going to go through each of those in detail for everybody's sanity. But overall, the FY15 Public Works General Fund allocation decreases by 2.1%. That decrease is a result primarily of reallocating several staff positions against other funds, specifically the CIP fund. This type of allocation allows the city to effectively leverage grant and other external funding and to better capture costs where they actually occur. These staff allocations remove approximately $200,000 of cost against the general fund. You can see many of these savings in the administrative cost center on pages 141 and 142. Moving on to the next, actually, I believe it's still on page 142. In solid waste and recycling, you'll see an increase of approximately $75,000 in that cost center. That cost center represents perhaps the most significant pressure upon our, our general fund in Public Works. The increase in costs here are the result of market forces that, that derive from environmental regulations and the expiration of existing contracts, which are going to have to be recompeted. The increase in environmental regulations, which really span across the globe, they're having the impact of increasing costs for disposal, but they're also reducing the revenue we, we receive back from our recycling market. We're proud to have maintained the highest recycling rate in the state, but we are concerned about a slight regression in several important, important metrics in solid waste. So our proposed budget actually includes a modest, a modest amount of additional funding for public outreach, hoping to, to increase our recycling and decrease waste generation, turn those trends around. Across the remaining cost centers in the general fund, we've incorporated or allocated funding where possible to support deliberate and efficient management of our infrastructure systems. We're fortunate to have a strong infusion of funding for new capital infrastructure, and we've proposed maintenance capital programs in the CIP. However, at existing staff levels, we will struggle to effectively and efficiently move forward with the CIP while supporting development and managing infrastructure effectively and responsibly. We have identified an additional engineer as our greatest unmet need in the general fund in this proposed budget. Next, why don't we move on to the sewer fund, or you want to? You want to start? Sounds, sounds good to me.
Here, let's do this quickly, though. Any questions or comments? I'll start with Mr. Duncan.
No, you go ahead, Nader.
Mr. Baruch?
Hey, I think on this one, I'm sufficiently worried. This is, you know, not to single out various departments, but I will for a moment. Public Works, Works is probably one of our most visible and core functions of what city government should be doing. And to read through the report and realize that our streets are failing because we're not probably maintaining them, and we're going to have to do massive redoing of streets, somewhat concerning. And I'm being facetious, I mean, it's, it's gravely concerning. This is core mission stuff of what the city should be doing. Sort of seeing the gaps that are happening here and layer on top of the capital improvement program we're doing. I'm just very troubled, and I can't put exactly where my finger on it is or to say yes to the engineering areas where it's lacking. But reading through the budget proposal, I've got great concerns about where this is headed. So I think that we're going to have to do some talking as a council about various levers and whether Public Works needs additional funding, and, and we need to make cuts elsewhere to make it happen. But, you know, deferred maintenance, where we're going to then have to, you know, pay seven times as much to redo streets, which is, again, core function of what local government should be doing, is really not, not a, a winning strategy. So, I think we're going to have to come back.
Thank you, Mr. Baruch, Mr. Duncan?
I would like to associate myself 100% with the remarks of Mr. Baruch.
Really?
Okay. Perhaps the Budget and Finance Committee might take this on as a special area of focus. I think that everything he said merits further attention and discussion.
And I hate to jump around, but, you know, just reading through just the cost center, sorry.
That's all right.
Just so I can, I think it's important to kind of put our, you know, ta, you know, start talking about sort of some of the numbers that we're saying, you know. There's cost centers that, just flipping through the chart, you know, we're adding positions, say, in the front office to the manager's office, and yet, I'm hearing that we're not doing street paving as aggressively as we should be, knowing that we've made cuts there. You know, I personally am not going to have a lot of tolerance for that. So, we, we need to figure out where our priorities are. And certainly, Public Works' street issues, economic development are critical. So, you know, I, I hope that we can start identifying those as we go through the budget process, at least that would be my hope, and then diving in with the Budget and Finance Committee that Mr. Duncan is chairing and I'm co-chairing. But, seeing that there are increases sort of in, in other areas that are not possibly is what I view core, and it, I just find that troubling. And I thought I'd just put it out there from, you know, in the very beginning.
Well, one thing I think we ought to just, we can touch on right tonight. The council has made a concerted effort to put more money towards infrastructure, and that is in the budget. What, what Mike has properly identified is that with the funding for the capital projects, we have essentially the same staffing levels that we've had. We have new staffing positions in stormwater, but elsewhere in, in Public Works, pretty much the same. And so the challenge is to handle development, take care of your core infrastructure, and then manage the CIP. We do have two new positions in Public Works that are being charged to the Capital Improvements Program. And so they're not in the general fund, but they'd be paid for out of the grants that we've received to carry out, particularly in the area of transportation projects. And so, there are, there is movement in this budget to provide additional resources that we don't have right now. But we also are, you know, raising a, a concern that, that we do struggle with the amount of work that's in the pipeline.
But the overall decrease to Department of Public Works is 2.13%, right?
And that's mostly because of reallocation.
Is that reallocation?
Yeah.
Is there, what, what's the true number? So what is the plus up?
So, reallocation, we are able to remove about $200,000 from the general fund. We add it largely into the sewer, we add it into general fund. So, it's really a net even on personnel, it's just where the allocation goes.
But plus two positions?
Yes, with regards to the two positions, those were proposed, those were recommended by the Planning Commission as part of the CIP. They're, they're recommended with the CIP in order to increase the pace of the capital improvement. So, they would be, do a significant job of increasing the pace of capital improvements. As proposed, they would not necessarily address the infrastructure maintenance issues.
I think I'm more interested in, in hearing about the infrastructure maintenance issues, because I think we're struggling with it, as sort of pointed out in, in the budget, proposed budget.
Maybe you could bring that to the Budget and Finance Committee for their in-depth. Ms. Conley?
I wrote, I wrote down a couple of questions, and I realized they all have to do with trees. We all, I think, got a letter from a resident, and it was also in the Falls Church Times, questioning the need for an arborist in Falls Church, wondering if it could be contracted out. So if you could just address that. And then my other questions related to trees are about street sweeping, which is in there, which for years, when I was Jody Acosta's next door neighbor, we, it just seems like the street sweeping doesn't really do much, and, or there are always cars in the way. When I used to stay with my kids, I would see the street sweeper go around all these cars and wonder what the point of that was. And then, I attended an Environmental Services Committee meeting, and they were talking about the issue of leaf mulch, and how people have a tendency in Falls Church to rake our leaves into the street, and then that is worse for the sanitary sewer than, and it, you know, last year it snowed, and the leaves were in the street, and that just caused a huge problem for you. So I'm just wondering if there's a way to tie all that together and make it more efficient somehow.
Street sweeping is actually extremely effective, and I can get you specific numbers in terms of the tonnage of sediment that's removed. We, the, the budget is proposed, proposes five passes of the street sweeper. The challenges you pointed out with regards to parked cars are very real, and if we could clear all the road, cars off the road, we'd get an even greater increase in tonnage. But I can get you specific numbers on the tonnage, and it's, it is remarkably effective in terms of removing sediment. With regards to the city arborist, that, we are currently contracting that position out on a temporary basis. That really becomes a question of the values of the city. And the urban forest and the Tree City USA are critical values of the city, in my opinion, and in everything that I see in the literature. I think if we want to maintain that and be true to those values, we need an in-house city arborist. We could, we could survive, we could continue to build things and allow development to occur without a city arborist, but we would very much lose the, the ability to protect and maintain and preserve our urban forest.
Mr. Z, does she have a question, or no?
No, you don't have one, that's good.
All right. I think that is it on that topic, so.
A quick run-through on utility funds?
Sure. Vice Mayor Snyder?
Yeah, one, one quick question. I wonder if we could encourage citizens to report where they're seeing problems in the roads? Do we have, like, one of our citizens came forward the other night, I think Mr. Henderson talked about that. So maybe we could put that out. And I know it's not specifically a budget issue, but it, it, it might be helpful to know where citizens think this work needs to be done. And then I, I agree with the comments about this being a core service. So, we need to figure out who's doing the core mission and who isn't, and can we allocate things differently? Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Shields?
So we'll shift to the utility funds.
So we'll start with the sanitary sewer, which is on page 209. So, on the sanitary sewer, you'll see we incorporate, the FY15 budget incorporates a rate increase of 9%. This was consistent with the recommendations of our rate study of 2012. The primary pressures on the sewer fund come from increasing treatment costs and continuing capital investment at the two treatment plants which serve our city. We have two functional cost centers in this fund, administration and collection and disposal. You'll see the administrative cost center had a significant, well, a moderate increase in cost. That's because it's assumed the customer service cost center. We just incorporated that into the administrative. And the increases in collection and disposal costs, the increases in the collection and disposal cost center reflects the increased treatment costs which we're incurring at our two treatment plants. One point of note, the FY15 budget does defer funding of the, the really important sewer rehabilitation program. This is relining for FY15. That's because we've accumulated a significant balance in that fund. So we're going to spend down that fund this year. We're not going to, we're just deferring this single year of payment. And we're actually going to use that money to, to make significant progress towards establishing a sufficient reserve fund. Looking forward, we anticipate continued but steady capital investment in the wastewater treatment plants, resuming contributions to the sewer rehabilitation fund, and there is a potential need to purchase additional capacity at the Alexandria, Alexandria Treatment Plant. These future needs are all reflected in the five-year CIP. And lastly, we will be updating our rate study in 2014 to provide guidance for the coming years to ensure solvency and value for our rate payers. Do you want to discuss this one before we move on to storm?
Other questions, want to go on to storm? Go ahead.
Very well. All right, page 219, you'll find the proposed stormwater fund for FY15. You'll see that it illustrates a 14% reduction in funding from the adopted FY14 budget. This reduction is a result of a 10% rate decrease, which council adopted in fall of 2013, which was after the FY14 budget had been adopted. The staff does not recommend any rate increases for FY15. The stormwater fund, it supports two functional cost centers, similar to the sanitary sewer. The administrative cost center illustrates a significant decrease from FY14 levels. Again, that's a result of staff allocations, where we'll be charging staff against the CIP. It also illustrates significant reductions in professional services as a result of the decreased funding levels than anticipated in FY14. The operations and maintenance cost center illustrates, will be working to achieve meaningful progress in the three goals of the program, which is satisfying regulatory requirements, addressing existing flooding issues, and replacing and maintaining failing infrastructure. Plenty more information if you are interested or have specifics.
Questions? Ms. Conley?
Is, with the stormwater ordinance that we are considering, there's a, there are credits for people who have BMPs on their property, where is that, is that reflected in here?
That is reflected in the revenue numbers, and I believe it is reflected. We are anticipating as much as $75,000 in credits.
What page are you on?
Uh, I, I don't, let me.
It's not written in here, it's?
Yeah, I think it's just bear, it's, it's incorporated in the revenue number.
So we're expecting $75,000 in credits?
That's how much we've budgeted. We're anticipating 1.5 in actual revenues and backing out about $75,000 in credits to arrive at 1.425 in total revenues.
Got it. And those are the credits that people have to apply for by the end of March?
That is correct.
To get for next year?
That is correct.
Okay.
If. Duncan?
Thank you. If we extended the credits for the stormwater levy to those who are eligible for either waiver or deferral of property taxes, how much more would that take away? How much more would you have to back up, back out of the, of the fund?
We, we don't, we think, we don't think we'll see $75,000 in credits applied for, even if we left it open. It's really, the deadline is more a challenge with. even if we left it open, it's really, the deadline is more a challenge with incorporating it into our billing.
Okay, so I guess the other way to ask that question is if we just had a blanket policy that we were extending a, either forgiveness or deferral of the stormwater levy to anyone who qualified for deferral or waiver of property tax, you could afford that.
Oh, you mean for, relative to the next item?
Yep.
We'd need to do the calculations on that, I don't think we've looked at that.
Okay, that's, that is a question I was going to ask when we get to the next item, but since you brought it up here. Is this the place to ask where, you know, how we respond to the comments that invariably we hear, which is that, oh yeah, my project is not going to get done until year 11 of this 10-year program? I mean, it just seems uncanny that whatever area we're talking about, you know, somebody will write in and say, on the plan, I'm not coming up till year seven, you know, somebody's got to be in the first year, I want to know who that person is, because everybody I hear from's in year seven. And is there anything we can do to make that transparent, so that people really know, okay, I'm not till year six? Or is there any way to accelerate it, short of bringing on more staff?
Specific to the stormwater funding, actually, the stormwater program, the real challenge we actually have here is, is funding. The needs for flood improve, for projects to address flooding issues is significant. The needs for water quality improvements, we're anticipating 25 million, excuse me, $15 million just to satisfy our regulatory requirements in the next 10 years. That's 1.5 million a year, just to satisfy regulatory. Flooding needs are significantly greater, and then our infrastructure situation is really, it's fairly critical. About, the estimate is 28% of our system is corrugated metal pipe, which is a rapidly failing material.
I feel like I'm seeing the movie that I've seen before, when Bill Hicks showed it to us, and maybe the Budget and Finance Committee could look into this further. I mean, I don't know, Mr. Snyder, others have raised the question of, can we accelerate the pace of work on stormwater improvements if we, you know, have a financing mechanism that enables us to, to do the work and to bring in staff to do it, even if it's just temporary staff?
Again, in stormwater, it's somewhat the opposite of the situation we have in the general fund, where in the general fund, we have a good deal of funding but inadequate staff to get it through. In the stormwater, we don't have enough funding to do the projects that need to be done.
Okay, let's talk more about that later.
Anything else?
Good one, thank you very much.
Conley, appreciate, appreciate your time.
Sure.
Nancy Vincent, and Jodi Acosta, and Jeffrey?
And Jeff Hill.
Thank you, Mike. So we will start off with discussion of the senior tax relief proposal, and then we'll have a review of the treasurer's budget, and then finish up with human services budget.
So go to council package.
That's right.
Right.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. So this is not a budget item?
Well, it has budget implications.
Yes. Absolutely. I, I helped to facilitate a review of the real estate tax relief program, I'm sitting here with Jodi Acosta and Jeff Hill, who manage the program, and will answer any questions that you might have, I'll just give you a broad overview. The purpose of the real estate tax relief program is to reduce the financial burden on low to moderate income seniors and those with permanent and total disabilities. The program currently provides a cap of up to $2,000 toward the property taxes, and is dependent on gross income and net worth. The maximum allowable income is $37,450, and maximum net worth is $540,000 excluding home and furnishings. The $2,000 cap has been in place since 2002. Any, excuse me, any remaining taxes may be deferred for any income-eligible family until such time as a property changes hands. There is a formula that takes into account income and, and net worth in figuring the amount of relief offered. Additionally, any veteran who is at 100% disabled is eligible for relief of 100% of the taxes. The current, the program currently offers about $56,000 in relief overall to seniors, and about $40,000 to veterans, for about 42% of the total. The, I guess, the second to the last page of the staff report gives a comparison of the tax relief programs in neighboring jurisdictions. The income limits in each is higher than in Falls Church, and none of these jurisdictions impose a cap, but rather provide a straight percentage of the tax bill depending on income. Two other jurisdictions, Fairfax City and Arlington, offer a deferral. One difference between the, the deferral program in Arlington, and I'm not sure about Fairfax, is that Arlington does not charge interest, and Falls Church does. They do charge interest, okay. The changes that are being proposed are first to tie eligibility completely to the area median income based on household size. Currently, a formula is used to exclude $10,000 in income from additional members of the household, not including the spouse. The proposal would simplify the income calculations and build in cost of living increases. Second, increase the cap up to $4,000, and expand the program to serve residents up to 80% of area median income, or $47,950 for a one-person household. Third, simplify the program by removing the tiered grants based on net worth. Any household with a net worth no greater than 540,000 would receive the full amount of the cap. And, and to note, the, the average property tax bill of somebody in the program right now is $6,300. And, any questions?
Ken, did you have a question?
So, is it your judgment that if we do this, we will substantially increase the number of people who will avail themselves of this vehicle? Any estimates on how many people are using it now, and how many might use it in the future?
We have, we've actually, it's gone down, the number of applications we've gotten every year for about the past four or five years. I believe the number of people in the program now are 44. Forty-four people now, it used to be about 50, 51.
And 44 includes both seniors and veterans, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So, any estimate about how many might?
Well, we think that we might pick up another 10 people, but they would come in at that lower tier, or $1,000 only. But what it would do is the people who maybe only, they're, they're only deferring now because their income is too high of a level to get any relief, it would allow those people to get, you know, some type of relief. We actually have a breakdown, you know, based on last year's applications, and we took their last year's income level and put it into, you know, the new tiered amounts, and we estimated that would end up costing us about an additional $80,000. And that includes the 10 new people at the $1,000 tier.
10, okay.
10 new people, yeah.
All right. I'm just doing back-of-the-envelope calculations, I'm, I'm not asking because I'm concerned about the increased cost of the program, but rather, this may be, you know, the best investment we can make, is to keep someone who is elderly and in their home, in their home, until we, you know, get all the schools built and city hall and library finished.
Right.
I mean, seriously, if, if 10 people move out, they will be replaced by 10 families, each of whom will have at least 2.3 kids, and there goes your $80,000 plus. So, I guess why I'm asking this is, is, do you feel like we're doing enough here? And if you do feel like we're doing enough, is our outreach and communications effort to really bring these people, because, you know, people are reluctant to participate in this program, I think, a lot of people are, who are eligible. They'll write us a letter being unhappy about the cost of living, but they won't reach out to seek relief. So, is this accompanied by an effort to outreach more?
It definitely will be accompanied by an outreach effort, you know, if we can get this implemented. You know, press releases, the website, we have a mailing list that we maintain for anyone who's interested, whether they actually apply or not. And how many applications do we mail out every year? Do you remember?
It was 203.
So, yeah, we mail out 203 applications, and we've got, you know, 44 people who actually So we definitely would get the word out there.
You got 44 qualified, 203 mailed out, how many were returned?
You mean how many?
How many people actually applied, but?
I think only three people were denied.
Three people denied?
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, and what we have found too, is that people who actually, like, maybe they're deferring their taxes now because they don't qualify for any relief, those are the people that this would help as well, it would help them stay in the city. You know, that's what we're hearing, even if the people who do qualify for our max relief amount of $2,000, you know, on a $6,000 tax bill, you know, they're saying, I still can't afford to live here. You've given me the max relief, and I still, you know, I'm still going to have to sell or move out, or whatever. So we think that this would help those people as well. It would raise a lot of those people up to the $4,000 max, which would really help.
Okay, well, I, I guess I'm supportive of this, and I'm just asking that, I think this is a really crucial part of the budget from a message standpoint, I mean, I think we heard at the town hall on Saturday, we've definitely gotten people's attention, you know, with the increased assessments, the increasing tax rate, you know, the stormwater levy, I mean, people have, it has dawned on them now that this is an extremely expensive place for some of them to live. And, and, you know, we want to try to complement that with a message that, yeah, but we're not trying to chase you out, and here's something that we really are structuring and making more generous to try to keep you in the community, because you're a valuable part of the community.
Well, another thing to note is that our asset limit of 540,000 is one of, is on the generous side, if you look at all the different localities, most of them are like 340. So even though our tax relief cap maybe is not as much as a Fairfax or an Arlington, our asset cap is higher. So we feel like maybe that, you know, can offset that a little bit, help a little bit.
Conley? Uh, oh, I forgot what I was going to say, no. Lost my chance.
I'm good. Have you, so, so if you, you're saying you, you go into the last page, you think you, another 10 families would qualify, so that would add, you know, 20K maybe to the, to the mix? And going to lines 197 and 205 here, it is junior debt, and it's indexed to the, to the prime rate, so what are you hearing about that? Is it, no, they don't care about that? That's fine?
The people who are deferring and we're charging the interest to?
Yeah.
They don't care, but what we're hearing a lot of is after they're gone, their heirs?
Right, they care.
Are quite surprised.
Right, right.
Some of them don't even know that their parents have been deferring their taxes.
Okay.
So.
So have there been any defaults, which is just my next question?
No. Any defaults?
Right.
No.
So, okay, so you're comfortable with that cap. I wish Rick Goff were here, he would tell me what, $2,000, so $2,002 worth NPV. Oh, he is here. Quickly, what is that?
Let's put you on the spot, Rick. Exactly how much is, how much is $2,002 of what, $2,000 worth now?
Yeah, so this is actually, you know, it's not twice, but so this is actually pretty generous, right? And I think it fulfills the, the commitment we made to, to people on the way that we would, you know, make a, make a real robust program. I, I quite frankly, am surprised at only, only expecting an uptake of such a small number.
That's our best guess, based on the returns, you know, that we've seen, so.
Who knows?
Right.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Ms. Conley, you remembered, okay.
I remembered my question. And this is just about, I have a neighbor who is elderly, I was talking to her the other day, and said, do you take advantage of this? And she had no idea that it existed. So, how, you know, you know her, she's Vietnamese speaking, she, she just had no idea that she could have, but she probably should have been taking advantage of it for a long time.
Right, right.
So, how, how do you outreach to people, or how do we make sure that every last person who is in every little corner, we reach?
Maybe we need more of a PR campaign, and, and, you know, a press release would help. I, I don't know when the last time we did one of those was, but that would certainly help.
Right, so I think if we do enact this in the budget, we really need to start to push it in as many ways as possible, and tell people to knock on their neighbors' doors, and?
Right, get it out there on?
She was completely, I could be what?
Wow, okay. Yeah, all right, thanks.
Mr. Baruch?
Do we send notices out of tax relief with the tax bills?
Yes.
Great. Anything else, or should we wrap this discussion up, or at least, let me ask one last question. Is this indexed to inflation? In other words, so we don't get so far behind, eight years from now, we realize we should raise?
It is, we're using the HUD Housing and Urban Development Area Median Income, which will change every year.
No, but the $4,000, I know the income level will be, but the?
No, it's not, it's not changed in this proposal.
Okay. I mean, that's something maybe to give a little thought to, because we got pretty far behind, maybe in waiting six years, or eight years, or whatever, 10 years. So, maybe that's something you all could consider as well, should the $4,000 be indexed to inflation?
Right, yeah, we did talk about that percentage versus the cap.
Gotcha. All right, thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor Snyder, did you have a comment?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, are we ready to move forward on this at the next meeting? Yeah.
I think we are, unless we have some?
Are there any requests and changes to the policy?
Sound like it.
Just one question, are we limited by state law at all on this, or is that just on the deferral program?
That's just the deferral program.
It is, the Virginia Constitution actually limits, you can give?
Well, yeah.
Property tax breaks to?
That's true.
This class is?
Basically seniors and?
Seniors, disabled.
And, and?
And seniors are 65 and over?
Right. And then people with 100% total disability as well.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Move on to the next item, Mr. Shields?
Just a quick run on the treasurer's budget and the human services?
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, very quick.
The treasurer's budget is on page 101 of your budget book. Basically, all the money that comes into or goes out of the city goes through our office. We work very closely with the Department of Finance, the Real Estate Assessor, and the Commissioner of Revenue's office. Our budget is pretty straightforward, the only significant change is a $20,000 software cost that we will have, it's an estimate of the software cost, to adopt the stormwater utility billing module. Munus, the software that we use now, does not have a stormwater billing module. We want to get it, obviously, it will be on the real estate bills in June of 2014, the stormwater fee. But the way that we're going to have to get it on the bills for June is sort of a workaround, because there's no stormwater billing module. So, we've requested that Munus look at that, and we're probably going to have to have an enhancement, and it's probably going to be around $20,000.
Thank you.
So, any questions?
And that's an expense that we can charge as part of the water sale proceeds, right? Shouldn't be an operating cost.
Okay.
Actually, one serious question, and that was a serious question, Mr. LeConde could tell me why it can't be.
Okay.
But, as a practical matter, the stormwater levy will show up on the same bill as your property tax, and yet it's not tax deductible. So, how are we, you know, messaging that, and how are we actually making sure that, you know, the bills that go to mortgage servicers don't screw it up?
Well, actually, mortgage service companies are pretty aware of this already, we get phone calls in the treasurer's office, you know, all day.
Mm-hmm.
They're checking taxes because they're going to settlement, you know, or whatever, they want enough taxes to pay, they always ask about stormwater fees.
Okay.
So they're pretty aware of that. We're also doing a mailing when we send out, we send an electronic file to all the mortgage companies. So in that, we will include, you know, we're now charging the stormwater utility fee, you know, separate from real estate tax.
So they're primed to deal with that? Okay, well, that's good, but there are about half the people who pay their own property taxes, so here we just need to make sure that they understand that they're not deductible, and your bill will state that clearly, I'm sure.
We'll have an insert to that effect. What will actually be on the bill will be the fee, you know, the number of units, the credits, all that.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Why don't we move on, Mr. Shields?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Page 158. And we're doing the best last, right?
That's right.
The Department of Human Services is comprised of three units, court service The Department of Human Services is comprised of three units: Court Services, Aurora House, and Housing and Human Services. We also manage service contracts with Arlington and Fairfax Counties. Page 158. The overall department budget was basically flat this year. The biggest reasons for no increase were the completion of a three-year grant with the Skill Source Center as part of the gangs prevention program, a decrease in the Falls Church local share of the juvenile detention home, and a decrease in the federal community block grant funding to the city. I'll start with Court Services. Court Services works with juveniles who go before the court for anything from speeding tickets to drug and alcohol offenses to assaults. The juvenile can be the perpetrator or the victim. Through the domestic relations piece, Court Services works with adults who are involved in child custody, child abuse and neglect, and domestic violence. The probation officers file complaints or petitions seeking court action and supervise offenders. The Juvenile and Domestic Relations Court is in session in Falls Church on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. The slight increase in the Court Services budget shown on page 161 is a result of salary increases and a proposal to contract with Arlington for the services of Court Services Director. The Juvenile Services budget on page 162 reflects a decrease due to the completion of the grant I mentioned and because the city did not have a resident at the Argus House Boys Group Home in Arlington. The city contracts with Arlington to provide the residential service for teenage boys in the same way as Arlington contracts with Falls Church for Aurora House for residential services for teenage girls. Juvenile Services on page 163 simply reflects the city's share of the court system cost and is determined by population. Everybody looks confused. On page, okay. Page 165, you'll find the Aurora House budget. Aurora House provides residential treatment for court-involved teenage girls. It serves Falls Church, Arlington County, and Alexandria. Typically, about 90% of the funding comes from Arlington and is based on usage. The program is one we, we as a city can be very proud of and provides behavioral and therapeutic services to serious emotional education and behavioral problems. Services include family counseling and parenting sessions. The budget increase is due mainly to salaries and increase in direct care coverage during some shifts. Moving on to Housing and Human Services, page 168. The budget is essentially flat. Housing and Human Services serves the city's most vulnerable through human services programs and those with low to moderate incomes through the affordable housing program. Housing and Human Services either provides the services directly, as with the transportation and first-time home buyers program, or by providing referrals to needed services. Public Assistance Programs on page 171 are also essentially flat. This group of services includes grants to nonprofits serving city residents and payments to Fairfax County for services such as public assistance, employment assistance, social services, domestic and sexual violence services, childcare services, shelter, comprehensive services for at-risk youth and families, in-home services for elderly persons and adult with disabilities, and placements for residents in adult foster care. The Community Services Board budget on page 172 shows a 4% increase. This budget has increased very little over the past several years. CSB provides services to residents who have mental illness, substance use disorders, and/or intellectual disability, as well as to infants and toddlers who have developmental delays. Finally, page 173 and 174 shows the payment to the Health Department will increase nearly 4%. This includes restaurant inspections, emergency planning, adult daycare, and the community clinic. And to wrap it up, I have to tell you, I have worked in the human services field for quite a few years now, and this work has been my passion since I was a teenager. Still, there's hardly a day that I'm not brought to tears by something that happens, whether it's a teenage girl who comes into our office looking for shelter after having been involved in the sex trade, or a man simply looking for a coat for the winter, or hearing about the girl who had been failing all of her classes and left Aurora House on the honor roll, or the boy who tells me that he looks at his, touching, that he looks at his probation officer like a father. Our programs help those city residents most in need and most vulnerable. They bring civility to our community and a sense of security. The staff and all human services are my heroes, and I have the good fortune of spending my days working alongside my heroes.
Thank you very much. Yes, that's very kind, very nice. Do we have any comments or questions?
That's the best thing I expect to hear during the entire budget season, I'll tell you. Thank you very much for sharing that.
Beats the streets are failing. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you for all you do with the resources that you ask for and that we give you. Thank you very much.
Anything? Ms. Connolly?
And this goes back to my same neighbor who didn't know about the referral on tax deduction. So, she, I was looking at page 170, where you're talking about adult day healthcare. And I guess my question is, so, there are other services, I think, that are available to this woman, and she just doesn't, she's got a husband who has Alzheimer's that she's the main caretaker for, but it would never occur to her to ask. So, my question is, sort of a double question. One is, how do we make sure that these people know, other than that we run into them and tell them? But the other question is, as far as the contracts that you're playing to Fairfax for these services, do you pay a set rate to Fairfax for adult day healthcare, or is it per person that uses the service?
For, for that particular service, it's a per person.
Per person?
Right.
Okay. For however many days. And how would somebody figure out that they can take advantage of that?
They, they either...
They just have to contact you?
Right, come into our, or come into our office, or through information from, from the county.
Right. Okay. Most of my questions are just about how we're making sure that people know that all these services are available to them, and I guess it's all through a variety of different ways.
Thank you, Mr. Baruch. Did you have something?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I, I just had a general question about the trends in the use of services over time. I mean, the city had some tough economic times, everybody else did. Are our numbers flat? Are they growing? You know, have you seen some changes, and what does it look like is happening now? Is there more demand, less demand, the same amount?
I guess it depends on the services that you're referring to. If we're talking about the, the human services, social services, that, those kinds of services that, that we think about, we have seen an increase in demand for those services. Affordable housing, we have a, that's kind of a big unmet need we have in the, in the city is housing for low people, particularly people with disabilities. So, so, yes, we do have an increase. If you're talking about demand in the, in the Court Services unit, the case loads have actually decreased, there's been a decrease in juvenile crime. So, so, those services have kind of gone the other way, but there's been a corresponding as, 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 as the decrease in juvenile crime, those individuals who are, are being seen have higher needs. So, there's more social services or human services associated with those individuals.
I guess I was asking because I know one of the things that some people find very surprising is our unemployment figure in the census data, because people look around this city and they, they don't think they see people with high needs. And so, I was just curious whether you were seeing an uptick or not, or, and if you weren't, if it was because we haven't been able to do the outreach, or whether this is a community that it's very hard for people to ask for help in.
And it could be, it could be all of that. We, there is, there is unemployment in the city, there are people with needs. I mean, we do referrals, there's people who don't have enough to eat, we do referrals to the food bank. We, we work closely with the schools, with families for, with that, with that group. There's homeless people who come into, to our office, we have a shelter, so there are, so there are big needs in the city.
Thank you. Yes, sure, Ms. Connolly, absolutely.
All right. My one more question is on page 164. The capital outlay of $20,000 for the Aurora House security and surveillance cameras. And I'm just wondering, I know that cable TV has money available just for equipment. Can that money pay for this kind of stuff? No. Ah, too bad.
Topper the franchise agreement and federal law for the PEG fees.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
No, other than, thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
Okay, again, thank you, and we appreciate your time. And I'm sure we'll be speaking with you more going forward. Thanks for sticking around.
Thanks, Nancy.
Okay, Mr. Shields, why don't we move on? And we've got a closed session, everyone, so keep that in mind. Let's hope to keep that as brief as possible. We have a closed session coming up here shortly. Is Mr. Taves still around, or did he leave for the...
He is, we will summon him forth. Quick discussion of the budget schedule.
Sure.
Okay. You all have the budget schedule in your packets. If you don't have it right in front of you, I'm just passing out the color-coded one, which is the same one that was in your packet.
By packet, you mean, this chart?
Yes.
Yeah.
The color-coded one is still, like, nice.
So, just briefly, the schedule, as we do have a Thursday meeting this week, but it is, at least in terms of our pre-planning, our only Thursday night meeting in the budget season. Mike?
Thank you. So, this March 20th would be our only Thursday meeting in the budget season, unless there's the need later on.
What time's the start time?
7:30.
With schools or without?
I'm sorry, 7:00.
With schools or without?
With schools. So, the, so the CIP, yes, it'd be in, in this room. CIP with a multi-year look, and then, since the schools will be here for the CIP, they're a big part of the CIP, I will then get the school operating budget. So, that not confirmed, you can cross that out, that is confirmed. So, that's the 7:00 PM start.
And Wyatt and the mayor, if I may, for that work session, of course, your budget book that you've been using this evening has the CIP with the corrected ones that you got on Saturday. If you want any more details about the projects, an actual description, then you'll need to refer to your bigger notebook that you got when I submitted it to the Planning Commission, and you also receive the updates and revised pages. And if there's any questions on how to replace and insert, I always offer to assist so that you have the latest document in front of you, so there's no confusion on fiscal years and anything that changed during the Planning Commission. Thank you.
So, on the 24th, then, we'd have first reading on the budget ordinance, the property tax ordinance, the sewer rate ordinance, senior tax relief ordinance, and the building and development fee ordinance that Jim Snyder mentioned tonight. We have, the regular scheduled budget finance committee is Tuesday, March 25th. I'll talk with the chairman about additional meetings as needed.
What time is that?
The standard time is 7:30.
Stop at 9:00 because...
Sorry, just to confirm, March 24th is 7:30?
Yes.
If the 20th is 7:00.
Yes.
Wait, I'm sorry. Now, totally...
The 20th is 7:00 PM.
It's Thursday, 7:00.
Yep.
That's where you're telling.
That's right.
So, the 20th is 7:00, 24th is 7:30.
Yeah. Everything else is 7:30.
Including the budget finance?
Hmm?
Maybe we can just do this.
Then we have a 10:00 AM on Saturday, April 5th. That will be in council chambers because the community center's all booked up. And then, a work session where we really try to cover the entire operating budget on, on April 7th and discuss personnel compensation. So, the, the way we've laid this out is, on April 14th, after the regular meeting, we go into work session for preliminary markup, and then have final markup on April 21st. And regardless of, you know, how we adjust the schedule, I would ask council not to have any additional meetings between the 21st and the 28th. Let the 21st truly be the final markup so that we can prepare the ordinance, it will be accurate. You have it the way you, you've done it on final markup. If we do a Thursday meeting or a Wednesday meeting, that's a real quick turnaround, and there's, just, it increases the opportunity for error. And so, that's it.
Unless we have any comments, why don't we go ahead and move to go to a closed session or get Pat down here and go into closed. Could we call Mike Novotny as well, and just let him know?
Okay.
I did speak with him earlier, but maybe if he wants to come on up and talk at all about, or join in the conversation about this issue, since it is EDA land, maybe we could give him a call on his cellphone, that would be too much trouble, or send him a text message or something.
I'll call him right now.
Okay.
Could you get Pat?
Could someone get Pat?
Before we do that, as I previously disclosed, I own property in 243 Country Drive, and my wife is president of the Winter Hill Community Association, and on the matters we'll be discussing, I can consider the matters fairly objectively and in the public interest. And this is as a prudential matter only, and I have to oblige the city as well.
Okay, why don't we take a three-minute break, and then reconvene when Pat gets here, and we'll go into closed session properly?
Here?
Yes. Okay. Are we ready to go into closed session, then? Do we have a motion, upon a motion made by council member?
Connolly.
All right. Hang on just a second here. Connolly. And seconded by council member?
Oliver.
Somebody? Oliver, okay. Oliver. And passed by voice vote of city council. Council wanted a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A7. Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the city regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. This is sale of the post office parking lot property. Council member Baruch?
Yes.
Council member Connolly?
Yes.
Council member Duncan?
Yes.
Council member Oliver?
Yes.
Council member Snyder?
Yes.
Council member Z?
Yes.
Council member Tartar? Okay, it is 10:50, and certification upon a motion made by council member?
Connolly.
And seconded by council member?
Oliver.
Oliver, Oliver. Passed by vote of city council, council reconvened in open session. Council member Baruch?
Yes.
Council member Connolly?
Yes.
Council member Duncan?
Yes.
Council member Oliver?
Yes.
Council member Snyder?